Captain.
Just a second, Councilman. Captain.
Yes.
Uh, could we bring Benny before the city council? And recognize him on behalf of the residents here in the city council. You think he'd be amenable to that?
I, I think, uh, you know, he really is shy, but I think I can kind of, you know, get him to buy into it, but I'll work on that now.
Yeah, let's get his full name and everything and, and, and do something, uh, because that's, he's been here forever.
Yes, he has.
Yes, he has.
Okay, Councilman, do you?
Yeah, I, I, uh, was gonna suggest that. Uh, if we could put him on our next meeting, um, the Zoom meeting, I believe, uh, it's gonna be Zoom and the captain can participate along with us in recognizing Benny publicly, uh, he's a good friend and he's been, I mean, until the number of hours, thousands of hours of volunteer work for the people of the city of Carson. He's, he's really a great role model for many others. So, uh, yeah, that's what I'd like to see is Benny, um, at our council meeting. So, Captain, that's what I was gonna ask you if you could. I know Benny and I know how he's little, um, humble, he's a humble gentleman and he doesn't want the lime, lime light, but if you could work on it for us, we'd appreciate it.
I will do that, sir.
Yeah, compile all the information. We want to do more than just a certificate. I want to make sure it's framed and presented to him in a, like a proclamation format, whereas he did came, all that good stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
Get that to the P I O office and she can make it happen for us.
Copy that.
But don't tell them we're gonna make a big deal about it, cause that'll make it less.
Yeah, it'll run away. Yeah.
Then I'll run to his house. Uh, any other comments? Okay, hearing that. Thank you, Captain, for that thorough report as usual.
Thank you.
Uh, is our Captain Bennett here from the LA County Fire Department?
Assistant Chief. Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Fantastic, fantastic. So I guess I'm up.
You're up.
Mayor, Council, thanks for having me and always thanks for your support of the fire department and your local Carson firefighters. And also to Captain Jones and his team for always being out there supporting, uh, the community, supporting our firefighters and keeping us safe. So, um, I was happy to report the last couple of months that we were fairly slow. Unfortunately, uh, the month of April, we picked up a little bit. So we had, uh, eleven hundred and twelve calls for service, which is about a hundred and thirty calls for the month, more than average, uh, about four calls a day. And probably I would, uh, attribute that to maybe the warm weather. We had a, a few weeks of warm weather and then definitely some wind that produced some calls. So we had, uh, twenty fire calls that resulted in, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars in loss, uh, six hundred and twelve EMS calls. We had six hazardous materials calls, uh, two hundred and fifty-eight good intent calls and, uh, about a hundred and twelve, uh, false alarms. So overall, a fairly busy month for your firefighters and, uh, they're still staying healthy and getting out there and, and doing the work for the community of Carson. So, uh, again, short report tonight, uh, but, uh, again, thanks for having me. Happy to be here and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for my colleagues? Well, Captain, I want to thank you.
Yes.
For being here and sharing your time with us. And thank you for that report.
You're welcome. You're welcome. You guys have, uh, a good evening and, uh, safe week.
You too.
Thank you.
Item number five is an update from the California Water Service on currently current drought. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Yes, we have, uh, with us from Cal Water. If I believe I thought I saw, there he is, Mr. Felix is, uh, on the line as well as I believe is it Miss Myers, Tammy Myers, my computer's, well, there she is, yeah. They're both here, so I believe they have a, a brief presentation for you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Would you like me to share my screen?
Yes, please.
Okay, just one moment.
Can't wait till we could do this in person again. Looking forward to it.
Hi, Ralph. Ralph, how you doing?
I'm doing great, Madam Mayor. How are you?
Good.
Okay, can everybody see it?
Yep.
Great. Okay, I'll let you take it away for the beginning part.
All right. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff and residents of Carson. My name is Ralph Felix, Operations Manager with Cal Water. This evening, uh, myself and Cal Water Conservation Specialist, Tammy Myers will present information on the current status of the drought, specifically the implementation of stage two of our water contingency plan, the impact it will have on our customers and your constituents, prohibited uses of water, conservation tools, Cal Water H two O Challenge Grand Prize winner and our valued partnerships. Slide. The most common question we get asked is, how did we get here? I'll provide some perspective by referencing key developing milestones that started in May ten, on, on May tenth, twenty twenty-one. Slide. On May ten, twenty twenty-one, Governor. That please.
Sorry.
On May tenth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom issues a proclamation declaring drought state of emergency in forty-one counties. On June ninth, twenty twenty-one, state ag- agencies call on water suppliers to develop water shortage contingency plans. Following that date, on June fifteenth, Cal Water files an updated water shortage contingency plan with CPUC. Next slide. On July eighth, Governor Newsom issues an executive order calling all Californians to reduce water use by fifteen percent from twenty twenty levels. On July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, Cal Water receives approval from the CPUC to implement stage one of our water shortage contingency plan. October twen- October ninth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom expands drought emergencies statewide. Next slide. Going forward to March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Cal Water files stage two of the water shortage contingency plan for the Ranch of Dominguez District, which Carson is part of. On, on March twenty-second, according to the U S Drought Monitor, thirty-seven point six nine percent of Californians are now in extreme or exceptional drought, up from just one point three nine percent on January eleventh. And then finally, on April fifteenth, stage two prohibited uses and irrigation restrictions going into effect. Next slide. Okay. As referenced in the presentation, Governor Newsom issued an executive order on July eighth to reduce water by fifteen percent from twenty twenty levels. In comparison to twenty twenty, the Dominguez system customers, which you're part of, reduce their consumptions by the following. December twenty twenty-one, reduction was nineteen point seven percent compared to twenty twenty. In January twenty twenty-two, reduction was fourteen point four percent compared to twenty twenty. And in February twenty twenty-two, the reduction was fifteen percent compared to twenty twenty. This is what I call leading by example. And now I'll pass it over to Tammy.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. So what does this mean for our customers and your constituents? So we realize that there's a lot of confusion as far as what stage two means, what the restrictions are. And really what we want to be able to do is highlight how this will affect the end users overall. So the one thing that we definitely want to make sure that our customers are aware of, and I know I've presented on this a few times, is just making sure that everybody is aware of the prohibited uses of water. One of those is applying water to outdoor landscapes that cause runoff adjacent to property. A lot of times you will see that there may be businesses, homes, or even, um, could be even freeway onramps that have broken nozzles that are just shooting off all over the place. And a lot of times people just are not aware of this type of, um, wasted water. And so really what we're wanting to do is be able to make sure for everybody to understand that, you know, it is a prohibited use and we want to make sure that people are aware of these types of behaviors that we need to be able to address and be able to help offset the water, wasted water use for our actual water use for our health and safety. Another thing is using water to apply to a driveway or sidewalk just for cleaning it. We really recommend use a broom. It's not necessary to use water. If you, you know, have something that absolutely needs to be scrubbed off, make sure just to take a little bucket, maybe pour a little bit on there, but really use a room, a broom for that. And to make sure that you are using a shut-off nozzle at the end of your hose if you are washing off your, um, your vehicle in your driveway. So some of the other prohibited uses are using water fountains, um, or decorative features without recirculating systems. And what does this mean? If you have a system or if somebody has a system where the recirculating use of the water, it's actually just pulling in the water to the system and it's just kind of flowing it back out again. You want to be able to have a system that's reusing the water over and over again, that, that really saves a lot of water just for those little tiny features all the way up to the really large features that you will see. And then the other thing is, is that when we do have rain, making sure that our customers are aware not to apply water after a significant rainfall within forty-eight hours. Another thing that we would like to make sure that our customers are aware of is that if you receive a notice from Cal Water that, um, identifies that there's a potential leak, um, we may receive notification that shows, hey, this meter's up. It looks like your usage is extremely high. You may want to take a look at your services. We do ask that our customers, you know, address the situation within five business days. With that, you know, give us a call if you are not sure of what's happening or what can be done. And then we can walk you through whatever the process may be and be able to help you figure out if we have programs that'll also help offset the cost for making those necessary prepares on your property. And for our commercial businesses, um, I do want to highlight that we are looking actively to do some direct marketing to our restaurants as well as our hotels so that we can provide tent, little tent cards and/or door hangers for the customers to be able to use for not using, not pouring water specifically at tables, but making sure people are requesting the water as well as giving customers the opportunity to choose the option of not having their towels and sheets laundered on a daily basis when they're staying at hotels and resorts. This one isn't a very common one, but we definitely, it is in our restrictions, so we like to make sure we want to mention this and highly, highlight it that, you know, at this point in a stage two that, um, you may not install non-recirculating systems to new connections for car wash applications as well as cooling systems for new connections. Again, very important to note that these are all for new connections only. If you already in, in exist have a car wash, this does not have an effect on you directly. So overall, what does this mean for you? Um, as a business, as a resident, um, as a constituent? Really, the, the change in the system between the stage one and stage two is going to be the two-day irrigation re- restrictions. And this is a highlight of what that area looks like. There's no watering between eight, eight AM and six PM. And the reason for that is it really allows for the water application to be applied to the necessary landscape versus having it, you know, um, having the E T O of where the wind picks it up and it's not actually being applied and evaporates due to the heat. So that's why we really recommend, and actually now it's a restriction, that you have all your irrigations done between um, six PM and eight AM. So it's during the evening hours mostly. And then here you can see what the watering schedule is. If you're odd number and that's gonna be the last number of your home or your address, your watering days are gonna be Tuesday, that's Saturday. If you have an even number, your watering days are going to be Wednesday and Sunday. And for no numbers, this could be areas of like HOAs, um, large apartment complexes, things like that, where they don't have like a designated number for those particular areas. Those are gonna be designated for Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Sundays as well. So an exception to these restrictions is if you have drip irrigation, um, currently or if you are moving toward a drip irrigation for your landscape, that does not need to apply for those restrictions. So if you have drip irrigation, you can water on the off days. So that allows you to use your sprinkler system during the times it's necessary and use your drip irrigation for the other times to make sure that you're able to apply the necessary amount of water to your landscape. The other thing is, is if you do not have an irrigation system and you are watering by hand, you may do so on any of the days of the week. However, it still needs to be before eight AM and after six PM. And you have to make sure that you have a shut-off nozzle at the end of your hose. And if you're gonna do certain, um, other items, you can also use a bucket for either washing your car and/or just watering, um, your planters. So penalties, um, nobody likes this word. I don't like this word, but, um, we do need to make sure that our residents are aware of what these penalties can be. So we do have first-time violations. It's a real-time water measure device installed on a commercial meter. However, I would like to mention, um, that our goal is really just to use this as an educational opportunity. A lot of times people are not aware of what their system may be doing as far, especially if you have an irrigation system that's set up and maybe somebody else has programmed it. You may not be aware that there's a leak and you may not be aware that something's happening. So we want to use this as an opportunity to help our customers be able to check for these types of, um, issues and/or concerns and be able to help them dial in so that they're meeting what these requirements are before going to any type of a violation. However, if we do have a situation where we have, um, customers that just really are not wanting to comply with what the restrictions are and are wasting water, not wanting to repair any types of leaks, there is a separate set of violations that will be able to be used, like the second violation of fifty-dollar penalty, third violation of a hundred-dollar penalty, and then all the way to, you know, a fourth violation of adding a flow restricted device installed. However, I would very much strongly like to say that is not our intent. We are not looking to try to find anyone. We are not going, gonna go out and just find a way to be able to, to find our customers. We want to use this as an opportunity to help our customers and see how our programs can help them moving forward. Which leads me directly into the next slide, which is great. So for our residential customers, I know I've presented that on this before, but I definitely want to highlight that we have increased our rebates to help our customers during this time of our drought. So before you were able to get a toilet for fifty dollars, we have actually increased it to a hundred dollars. And if you are purchasing a high-efficiency clothes washer, you are able to get up to a three hundred dollar rebate for a qualified device. We also have a few other programs that I'll mention in a moment for both our residential and our commercial customers, and those are the high-efficiency sprinkler nozzles that we have rebates for our lawn to garden and our spray to drip. Now for our commercial customers, the, the use and the devices that are actually in those types of buildings obviously are going to be different than what your residential home use is. So we have increased those rebates as well. So if you have old inefficient devices, you can replace those with high-efficiency valve-type toilets. We're offering two hundred dollar rebates versus a hundred dollars previously. And the same with the high-efficiency urinals. I will say that the city of Carson at their city hall did a great job with participating in this program and you guys retrofitted all of the toilets that are at that site to help, you know, kind of set the pace moving forward. And I am working with your staff currently to be able to do the same thing at your city parks. So you guys are already doing a fabulous job and it's been great working with all of your staff. And I look forward to be able to use these types of tools to be able to show other customers how we can help them offset some of these, you know, older devices that may be actually having money, kind of going down the drain. So one of our new programs is our lawn to garden and our spray to drip program. This program allows for our cus- our residential and our commercial customers to be able to participate to remove areas of lawn that are just not being utilized and that use a lot of water. Gives you the opportunity to be able to put in a drought tolerant area, be able to make it more, um, appealing, but also make sure that we're using water really where necessary. And it also gives you the ability to install a drip system so that that way you won't have to be so restricted with the particular water days as we move forward to these drier conditions. For our residential customers, it's three dollars per square foot just for the turf removal. And it's up to fifteen hundred square feet. And then if you have a commercial property, it's three dollars per square foot and then it's up to ten thousand square feet. So you can potentially get a thirty thousand dollars toward a project for taking out lawn that's not being utilized, but is just really thirsty and using a lot of water. One of the other programs that we have that has been very well receptive by all of our customers is our Smart Landscape Tune-up Program. For customers who have an irrigation system, they're not really sure i- if it's working properly or if there's more efficient devices that can be installed because it's older, or maybe you just need a, a newer weather-based irrigation controller to help really kind of fine-tune what your system is actually doing. If you sign up for the program, you will receive, um, notification and you'll get a call. And what we'll do is we'll send out a qualified evaluator to come out, look at your system. They'll check all of the nozzles, the spray heads, the spray bodies, as well as the controller and the whole system as a whole, run it all. And then they'll make recommendations on items that, you know, could be retrofitted to be able to make it a more efficient system. At that time, they'll report back to Cal Water. We will then give them, um, approval based on what the recommendations are. And then we would send them back out to schedule an appointment with you to be able to do these retrofit at no cost to the customer. Again, at no cost. So if you have a system, it can't be a system that is broken or not functioning, but if you have a system and you need some assistance to figure out what's wrong with it as far as if, you know, maybe your drip line's not working properly, or maybe your irrigation controller's really old, or maybe you have some nozzles that are spraying all over the place and you're just not aware because maybe the timer is going on in the middle of the night. I really, really, really recommend for you to go to our calwater.com forward slash tuneupprogram and sign up for this program. It's, it's been a huge success and I can't wait to be able to share in the upcoming months of the success stories that we've had within your community. And as always, we have our free conservation kits. With these kits, all you have to do is go onto our web portal, sign up. They're absolutely free. You'll get two free high-efficiency shower nozzles. You'll get two leak detection tablets. We'll allow you to check to see if your toilets are leaking from the tank to the, um, to the bowl, as well as two high-efficiency bathroom aerators, one garden hose, so that way we make sure that our customers have the necessary tools to be able to water when they're not using their irrigation system, as well as a high-efficiency kitchen faucet aerator. And that will allow you to actually turn off the, the aerator when you're washing your dishes and not having the water continue to run. Now for the great news. I'm not sure if everybody has heard and I won't go into too much details because I'm really hoping that we'll have an opportunity to invite the teacher in the class to hopefully an in-person council meeting. But I am very, very excited to say that our grand prize winner of our H two O Challenge was the Bonita Street, um, Steam Academy, fourth grade class, Tiffany, uh, Raquel's class did a project and their mission was make our oceans blue again. Again, I don't want to spoil all of the, um, the good stuff that they'll have to tell you about it, so I'm, I'm hoping we'll be able to schedule that with you guys. But I would like to share that, um, with this, they've also earned, the grand prize includes a thirty-five hundred dollar classroom grant, a one thousand dollar scholarship for each participating student and a gift card for the teacher and students. So I'm very excited. Cheers to, you know, your city for participating and being the grand prize winner. And hopefully we'll have a lot more to say about this moving forward.
They will be invited and I'm glad, that was an excellent event. Councilman Hicks and I attended. So we will get in touch with, uh, the classroom teacher to let them know when and also yourself to let you know when we'd like them to come before council. We'll be in June before they are to school.
That's great. I'm so excited. So thank you for that. I only have one more, one or two more slides and I won't take much more of your time. Um, so one of the other things that for those who are not aware is that I've been working with your city staff and, uh, with Eliza Jane and really trying to identify what we can do to help the city be able to help with the water use currently that you guys are using, as well as how can we demonstrate better water use, um, features as well as gardens and be able to really set the standard for your residents. And so what we've done is, as you know, in a previous presentation is that the city is going to be doing their city park irrigation upgrades. We are already in the works of that. And what that is, is is going through all of the parks within the city and just upgrading all of the nozzles and spray bodies and controllers where we're able to and be able to really just make every location more efficient, just doing the very basic, but just putting in the most efficient um, devices currently. And then we're also looking at doing the city hall demonstration garden. On the left here, you can see this is just an overview. And I'm working with Eliza as well as West Basin and, um, a few other, um, partners. And what we're looking to do is to really get rid of all of this area that just is grass that's not being utilized. It's, it's just very thirsty. And so what we want to be able to do is make this more of a inviting demonstration garden where people can learn about water use as well as drought tolerant plant material and then be able to provide hopefully an area where, you know, the um, city employees will be able to, you know, go outside and really enjoy the atmosphere. So there's a lot more to come for that, but I just wanted to make sure that I highlighted that with you. And we're very excited to be able to partner with you on that. And then the other area that we're also identifying for the turf removal and being able to put some of those drought tolerant plants and kind of expand them over to the community center in these areas that you see highlighted here. These are all lush green areas that really, there's a lot of things that we can do with this to really reduce the water use and really set those examples and make it really a demonstration to be able to show your constituents and your residents of what you guys are doing to put your best foot forward. And we are ecstatic to be partnering with you with that. And as always, we have additional customer resources. We have fact tips sheets that are on our website. We do informational mailings to our customers, like I mentioned with the hotels as well as restaurants. We do a lot of customer outreach going out to, uh, hopefully now that we're able to go out to locations and be able to be at events and answer questions for our customers. And then a lot of social media posts as well, just to be able to target our customers and make sure that everybody is aware of what we have to offer for you. So I would recommend for anyone who is interested to see what we have available, they can go to calwater.com forward slash conservation. If you would like detailed information with regards to the drought or just want to check in to see what is happening at the current time, you can go to calwater.com forward slash drought. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I, I want to just say thank you, uh, Ralph and Tammy, uh, for just, uh, on the cutting edge of everything, the, uh, the presentation. And I know that you guys have been working personally with uh, our Public Works Director to make sure uh, that Carson, uh, our city is transformed and uh, make sure that we are water friendly. So I just wanted to appreciate you guys. I see you work so hard behind the scenes. I wanted to publicly thank you guys, uh, uh, for what you guys are doing. And congratulations to those young people at Bonita Elementary. Uh, it's a wonderful thing getting them involved early and to have those scholarships and to have that type of, um, community effort and community input is wonderful. And I just wanted to say hats off to you, Ralph and Tammy. I really appreciate you both.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Tammy, I also want to, uh, concur with Councilman Hilton and my other colleagues about, uh, the great work you do. Um, you and Ralph and your entire staff and the entire California Water Service Company. Um, and be sure to say hi to Shannon. I know she's in Northern California, but she was down here before. Uh, uh, we, we want to, uh, be sure that this type of information that you're giving us today gets out to our residents. And maybe you could work with our public information office, uh, to be sure that our, to our city manager, of course, Mr. David Roberts, to be sure this information gets out. Cause there's a lot of people who would like to have a, you know, drought tolerant front yard and not be spending all the money on, on watering lawns. And, uh, you know, drought tolerant yard can look very beautiful. It could bloom certain times of the year, you know, uh, there's certain, uh, plants that are just really are perfect for that. And, uh, that type of, um, consultation and intervention, I think it would be really useful. I think there's a lot of people in Carson that would take advantage of it if they knew about it. And they're not watching tonight's council meeting necessarily. So we need to do some outreach, um, to them and the city can partner with, uh, with your company, Ralph, to, uh, and Tammy to make that happen.
We look forward to that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ralph and Tammy. I, I wanted you to come and do this presentation because I knew a lot of our residents did not know. And you responded in a week's notice. I think I saw you at the Bonita and I had you to come do this presentation. So I really want to say thank you. You guys have been so, Ralph, visible in our community since you have, uh, taken over uh, the spot that you have. And you're just there when we need you. And I, I really appreciate that. Really appreciate your presentation and the watering cycle. I'm gonna ask that our, um, our staff have this up on our website also. And also, like, uh, the council said, we need to get all this information out to our residents. Uh, because it's good information and, and it helps us. And I might, I'm excited about the fact that we exceeded our expectations as for water conservation. So I know we can do more, but that was good news when I heard it. So Carson, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. I know a lot of these notices came out uh, within our water bill, I think in April. Did you say, Ralph, Tammy?
Yes.
Yeah, it came out in April, uh, that these are your cycles. So just wanted to remind the residents, even though we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, we exceeded our expectations. We are still gonna do more because it, this is a very serious situation that we're in.
Yes.
So thank you very much.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
Just want to say to Tammy and to Ralph, thank you for their presentation. Again, very excited at Bonita Elementary School to see those children receive that award when they were told they were gonna get a thousand dollar scholarship for, I mean, that was outstanding to give that kind of money. And just wanting to, uh, commend Cal Water and that I'm glad that that report did come out, Madam Mayor, regarding April. And that we were able to exceed that amount of number because uh, just to the staff and to Elijah Jane, just making sure we look at our mediums to make sure our mediums are not watering the streets. So there's a couple of them. I'll, I'll let the staff know about them. I'll see them at night. But again, thank you for that presentation. Outstanding work. Always. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm just gonna ditto what everybody said. And yes, I'm one of those that would like that beautiful front lawn and not have to water it all the time. So, thank you. Yes. Thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you to all of you for your continued support. Um, Cal Water is here for, for anything you need. Um, you'll see us again out at the events now that things are opening up again. We always have a conservation table because conservation is, is the way of life moving forward. Um, and we don't want to take the, the foot off the pedal. Um, so come out, you know, say hello, ask questions when you see us. You know, email us if you need any information. Uh, we'll be more than happy to assist. So, but thank you for all your support.
You know, email us if you need any information. Uh, we'll be more than happy to assist. So, but thank you for all your support. Um, not only from the council, from the mayor, but also from all the residents in Carson. Uh, it's a great community. And um, you guys are leading by example. So thank you.
Ralph, quick question. Wasn't one of our other schools a second runner up or something in this?
Uh, last year, I believe, um, it was a fourth place winner.
Fourth place.
Yes, uh-huh. Yep. And then that's a, that's a competition that statewide throughout our service areas. We serve over two million customers in California and um, it it's a really, it's a big deal. And uh, I don't want to spoil um, the details of of how they want and what project they use, but um, it's it's pretty, uh, it it was pretty um, amazing. And the leadership of those young, young children um, is just inspiring. So it was a great event and a great school, great community.
Well, I was impressed when I found out what the project was and I won't let the beans out, spill the beans, eat it. So uh, we need all the kids' names and we'll, we'll work out the presentation so they can come before the city council. And thanks again.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have a proclamation recognizing Cinco de Mayo, which we had a wonderful event uh, at Carson Park this last Sunday. Yep. They're before yesterday. Uh, it's our, um, Walter Gonzalez on, the Chair of the uh, Parks and Recreation, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I did see him. He's at the bottom there, Mr. Gonzalez. Yes, please.
Well, Mr., how are you? I want to thank you for coming out. You were at the Cinco de Mayo on uh, Sunday. It was a wonderful event. People were out early. I was really pleased and shocked. I mean, we had Hi. Sparkle, I see your face.
This is going to Councilman. It's not even mine.
Sparkle.
Sparkle, you're not on mute. Sparkle, you're not on mute.
Kevin, please mute, please.
Is that a painting of Sparkle?
Yeah, that's a sparkle, all painted and dialed up. So the uh, proclamation reads in recognition of the historical significance of Cinco de Mayo, where Cinco de Mayo, the the fifth of May commemorates the victory of the Mexicans over the French army at the Battle of Peublo in eighteen sixty-two. And where Cinco de Mayo is more than a celebration of a single glorious moment in the long history of Mexico, Mexico's struggle for independence with their victory over the French, it is a reaffirm affirmation of self determination, a universal aspiration shared by freedom-loving people throughout the United States and the world. And where Cinco de Mayo has become one of Mexico's most famous national holidays celebrated annually by nearly all Mexicans and Mexican-Americans, north and south of the United States, Mexico border, and whereas the courageous and historic spirit that Mexico General Zaragoza and his men displayed during this historic battle can never be forgotten. And whereas many brave Mexicans willingly gave their lives for the causes of justice and freedom in the Battle of Peublo in, on Cinco de Mayo. And whereas the Cinco de Mayo is a celebration of the virtues of individual courage and patriotism of all Mexicans and Mexican-Americans who have fought for freedom and independence against foreign aggressors. And whereas Cinco de Mayo also serves as a reminder of the close spiritual and economic ties between the people of Mexico and the people of the United States, and especially important for the people of the southwestern states, where millions of Mexicans and Mexican-Americans make their homes. And whereas in a larger sense, Cinco de Mayo symbolizes the right of free people to self determination, just as Benito Juarez once said, el respe el respecto, oh, I can't read that one. The respect of other people's rights is feast. That's what it means. Therefore, the mayor and the city council Carson, California do hereby recognize the historical significance of Cinco de Mayo acknowledges the historical struggles for independence and freedom of the Mexican people. Call upon and call upon the citizens of Carson to observe Cinco de Mayo with appropriate ceremonies and activities is dated the third day of May twenty twenty-two. And we did just that at our Cinco de Mayo celebration on Sunday. And uh, to our Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, thank you for agreeing to accept this uh, proclamation. And would you like to say a few words, please?
Mayor, City Council staff, within on behalf of Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission and Carsonians, we humbly accept this proclamation of Cinco de Mayo. Last Sunday's celebration at Carson Park was a success, successful event. It was an honor, an honor to be there. We congratulate the organizing body, Vendos, voluntary association, sponsors for success turnaround, considering that we are just coming up with this worldwide pandemic. Thank you for this honor and to all Carsonians, Carson is back. Thank you.
Carson is back. Thank you. Uh, Councilman, uh, any comments? Uh, I know Councilman Hill, Councilman Dear participated in the, in the walk run.
Yeah, I, I did. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, along with Councilwoman Eileen Rojas, we did the five K walk slash run. I started running and then I walked most of it. But I did, I did complete it, the entire five K. And it's a very healthy and we had a great burnout uh, for the five K and for the entire event. I must say, I've attended Cinco de Mayo for the past nearly thirty years. And this event in Carson Park, uh, this last weekend was very impressive. I want to thank uh, David Roberts and his entire staff, Park and Recreation Recreation Staff, uh, particularly Senior Herrera, the Senator Director and her entire staff uh, for doing a fantastic job. The um, Volunteer Association with Eric, Jesus and Jose. Um, the committee, which is city staff members, you know, Pat Camacho, Gwen Whitaker Pompey, Nick Reyes, the great Charles as MC as usual, uh, Howard Johnson, uh, everyone really came through and um, you know, when that happens, it's like Councilwoman Rojas says, we're stronger together. Uh, I must say that this Cinco de Mayo this year uh, was the most well-attended in many, many years and well-organized. Uh, the entertainment was non-stop. I think I was the first, one of the first elected officials there, the first and, and uh, and the last one to leave. Uh, it was really a fun event, uh, educational. The, the classic cars were fantastic. Really, every aspect of this Cinco de Mayo was really wonderful. I'm, I'm glad that the the turf was maintained enough. We probably could work on that a little bit. And next year, I expect it to be a larger event. Um, it was so, so well-attended by the community and people stayed a long time. Everyone really enjoyed themselves. So um, uh, our, all of us were there. Uh, several Councilmen Hilton had another commitment, otherwise he would have been there, but we did a good job representing.
I was there, um, uh, uh, Councilman.
Well, you did. You came later after your church.
I came after church, so technically I was the last one there.
I did see you there. And uh, no, I did, I did see you. I stayed correct. I think it was Councilman Hicks that uh, had another commitment, otherwise.
No, I was there. I showed up.
Oh, you guys, you all showed up. Oh, good.
Everybody was there.
I was there.
That's an example. The crowd was so large, uh, which is a good thing. Um, that um, we all, we all worked well together with uh, uh, just not the elected officials, but the, the staff. You know, so Mr. Roberts, kudos to you and your entire staff. You did a great job. I really, uh, really appreciate it. And the people of Carson really appreciated it.
Thank, thank you, sir. I, I just, I want to say first, uh, really, this is uh, Senior Miguel Whitaker and his team that really handled all this. They are exceptional. Um, they, they worked tirelessly, especially coming back from COVID. And they, they really wanted to make sure that residents enjoyed this event. So Madam Mayor and Council, that this really, all the kudos goes to, again, uh, Mr. Whitaker and his team for continually to to, to, to impress us every time an event is, is put on. So I just wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Madam.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. It was great. I ran, walked, um, had help. And thank you to our staffers who also ran um, and took photos and, and uh, and it was a really good time. And I, I danced on the dance floor, so the bands were great. And again, this was one of those events where the community uh, really came out and had a great time. They were just so happy to be there. And um, again, the staff did a great job and putting it together. And I believe the car club was uh, Viejitos, I, I believe is the car club. There may have been even more, but uh, let's put a shout out to them. Very, very good uh, show for them. And another is our Focia Park Boxing Exhibition that was also uh, very impressive. And those kids had a great time. So we need more of those uh, enrichment programs for the community. Um, we need to keep doing this and continue. And yes, congratulations, Walter Gonzalez. And everyone who put this event together, it really did show that uh, the city of Carson has stepped it up and, and we are on our way to uh, rebuilding and getting back out there. And thank you to uh, LA County Sheriff's Department who was uh, walking around and hanging out and, and showing their visibility. And everybody was also happy to see them there. So that was great. Everybody did a great job. Let's, let's keep doing this. Thank you.
I, I think everyone was glad to see happy faces. We've been in lockdown for two and a half years. So when I walked on that park and saw that many people at twelve o'clock, I said, ooh, everybody's excited about coming out. So we're out of jail. So we, we have four events to come and you're gonna see more happy faces. But uh, to the
And we apologize for running out of food. I mean, that's how many, I mean, we, we didn't expect that many, but that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Next time we know that we'll have more food. We ran out of, of tacos.
Double up, double up on tacos.
Yes. Double up, double up, because, because we can eat.
That's, that's what we do best. Don't have a party in Carson without food, okay?
Oh, man.
Carson likes to celebrate and eat. So that's okay. That's what we do.
One thing I want to add, Madam Mayor, you know, the five K, um, to Mike Whitaker, through the city manager, um, maybe if we could um, block off the streets a little bit because uh, we want to avoid any type of obstacles that we ran into when we were doing the five K. And also, uh, there was a little traffic congestion. And if we had the sheriff's blocking off that just while the, you know, the runners are going by. Uh, that, that's one thing I would uh, think we could improve on. But uh, you know, overall, it's, it's guess an A in my book as far as a great event. Uh, but something we want to, want to look at for next year is revising the five K a little bit. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks again, Walter, for accepting this and uh, the proclamation, we will have it for the commission. You can share it at your next meeting and uh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Teachers Appreciation Week, Councilwoman.
Yes, yes, thank you. And uh, congratulations to all the educators out there for Teacher Appreciation Week and a shout out to Councilman Jim Dear. You have been an educator, uh, retired, and then you came back and still teaching. So yes, knowledge is power and we are always learning something new every day. So, okay, here we go. Proclamation.
Dr. Higginson is here.
Yes, there she is. Uh, proclamation in recognition of May uh, first through the seventh, twenty twenty-two. And you know what? It's every day in my book. Uh, but Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas a strong, effective system of free public education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government. And whereas the United States and the state of California has made considerable progress in the social, technological and scientific fields due to our system of free and universal public education. And whereas much of this progress can be attributed to the qualified and dedicated teachers entrusted with the educational development of our children. And whereas teachers should be accorded high public esteem, reflecting the value the community places on public education. Teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education. And whereas teachers are important in helping children reach their full potential. Our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community service. And whereas it is appropriate that teachers be recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating our children. And whereas the city of Carson recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community and beyond. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of Carson, California hereby proclaim May first through the seventh, twenty twenty-two as Teacher Appreciation Week. And be it further resolved that we strongly encourage all members of our community to join with us in personally expressing appreciation to all teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work and their contribution to our national progress. This is dated this third day of May twenty twenty-second. And I am proud and uh, thank you, Mayor Lula Davis Holmes, for allowing me uh, to uh, to speak on behalf of the city council. And this year's, uh, or this twenty twenty-two recipient is Dr. Alfie Hemphill. And uh, where is she? There she is. Thank you and congratulations. There you go. Muted.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Thank you so much. And I'm completely honored um, to receive this proclamation on behalf of all of the fabulous teachers here in the city of Carson. And I also want to express my gratitude to our city council and our mayor. And then they're not just words. I wanted the community, no, they're not just words on the page. Your city council and your mayor supports your schools. They are in your schools. They are concerned about our schools as well as I. And I'm just honored to serve um, the best community in Los Angeles Unified School District.
That's right.
Uh, what's your title, Dr. Hemphill? You're over how many schools?
Uh, I support and oversee the twenty-two uh, public schools in the city of Carson from the Dolores Early Ed Center all the way through twelfth grade at Carson High and Rancho Dominguez High. So I'm, I'm called the Community of Schools Administrator.
Yes. Thank you so much for accepting on behalf of all the teachers in, in the district.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to add to that. Dr. Hemphill, you do a fantastic job. I see you at event after event and uh, you along with your colleague, Michael Romero, um, are very much appreciated. Uh, your concern, your, your, your talent as, as an educator and as a person in general, it, it's much appreciated, I, I really must say. And uh, on a historical context, you know, in America, it's been, it's been known that education, public education, free public education uh, is often called the great equalizer. There are people as, as you see, um, in Carson and other places, um, children of the most humble households and um, uh, can become very, very successful in America with the right education. And that's how important you and, and the teachers you represent are to our children in, in Carson and in the country. And so um, I just feel very honored to be a fellow educator with you and uh, and doing the right thing for our young people because uh, it's a little clichish, but it's so true that the children are our future. Uh, our future depends on their success. And uh, your work to help that, their success is appreciated. Thank you.
And, and Dr. Higginson is a Carson resident also. Let's remember that. She lives, works and plays in the city of Carson.
I was gonna say that, Mayor, you stole my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna say, she, and she's definitely uh, the person for the job. She's concerned about our students. I had a, I had a, a long talk with her this weekend about uh, schools as my children are transitioning schools. Uh, I talked to her and she gave me a comfort level. Uh, our schools are on the move. And uh, they are the place to be. So uh, for those parents who may be on the fence, we have great schools uh, out of the twenty-two here in Carson. And I encourage you to check them out.
Thank you, Michael Tam.
Hi, hello. Hello, hi. My name is Brandon.
Hi, hello. Hello, hi. My name is Brandon Neal. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm sorry to interrupt.
For you?
I'm Brandon Neal. I'm the owner of Caveman Buzz Barbershop.
Not yet, not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
Oh, okay.
Not yet, Brandon.
Okay.
Unless Brandon given us some uh some walk-in appointments.
I know. You know that's why I'm saying.
Wait a second, Brandon. One more ahead of you.
But Dr. Hemphill, I just want to say, Madam Mayor, just thanking all the teachers and making sure that we understand each one of us had a transitional pivotal time behind a teacher. We all know that personal teacher that touched us the most and gave us that inspiration to move forward in our education. So again, I salute all the teachers in education because that's the key to all success.
My fifth grade teacher. Thank you. Brandon, one more that will let you on. The next one is uh Councilman Hilton, proclamation proclamation recognizing Municipal City Clerk's Week.
Uh thank you, Madam Mayor. I would be remiss uh not to give this to our own city clerk. Uh we have a city clerk in the house who's well-able, capable, and she just came in and hit the ground running. So I would like to present this to Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, a proclamation in recognition of May uh first through the seventh, twenty twenty-two as Municipal Clerk's Week. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a a time, honor, and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas the municipal clerk have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as an information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk throughout participation in education programs, seminars, workshop, and the annual meeting of their state uh provincial, county, and international professional organization. And whereas it's most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council of Carson, California do hereby recognize the week of May first through May seventh as Municipal Clerk's Week and further extends appreciation to our municipal clerk, Dr. Kalia Bradshaw, and to all the municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community they represent. Signed and dated on this the third day of May twenty twenty-two. Thank you so much, Dr. Kalia, for the work you do.
Thank you very much. I I really appreciate it.
That's quick.
Obviously, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to serve the city. Um I feel really fortunate that I inherited a great team um that makes me look really good. Um but it's really an honor to serve the city that I've lived in for the last sixteen years. So I'm very grateful for this. I was slightly caught off guard. I mean, obviously, I see the agenda, but I didn't realize it was gonna be such a grand presentation by uh MPT reading it so thoroughly. But I am grateful for it, and it's been an honor to work alongside the council and just get to know everyone over the last four months. So I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. You're doing a fantastic job.
I appreciate it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next on the oh, congratulations. Next on the agenda is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Week, Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, we had a very zealous uh businessman, Brandon, over at uh Caveman Barbershop. But I want to um do this proclamation because I uh three of our small businesses were selected, one being um the Caveman Buzz Barbershop, uh Last Minute Flowers with uh Doug Mays, and also uh El Charo Taco Charo with uh Susan Zabada and Victor Zabada, who remain today being Taco Tuesday. They are very busy during this entire week because of Cinco de Mayo. So we're representing three businesses in the city of Carson who are small businesses for the week of May first through the seventh. And whereas the entrepreneurial spirit is a defining quality of our city, which time and again has lifted us to new heights and carrying us through our greatest challenges. Small businesses are not only the engine of our economic progress in Carson, they are the heart and soul of our community. During National Small Business Week, we celebrate our city's small businesses, the pillars of the neighborhood. And whereas when COVID nineteen pandemic first struck in twenty twenty, it posed a historic challenge to American small businesses. Most from coast to coast, in big cities, small towns, rural excavates, the tribal communities, small business owners and workers demonstrated remarkable courage and resilience, adapting to sudden changes in our way of life and stepping up to serve their communities. Across the country, small businesses extended helping hands to their neighborhoods during the pandemic darkest hours. All while entrepreneurs and employees worked tirelessly around the clock to keep their business afloat, make payroll, and ensure the safety of their team and customers. Whereas despite the determination of our small business owners and the employer and their employees, the pandemic hit them hard. The pandemic extended in uh in 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 cap in incapable toll on only the lives and livelihoods, but on far too many small businesses' dreams and family legacies. Whereas to ensure that these community pillars have a fighting chance to reopen and stay open, the city of Carson provided loans and provided support to our small businesses. And whereas the city's small businesses define our community, drive innovation, and create the products and services that enrich our lives to build a better and more sustainable city. By harnessing the power of our small businesses and equipping our entrepreneurs with the tools and resources they need to innovate, adapt, grow, our economy will continue to build back better and better than before. Now therefore, the mayor, city council, the city of Carson do hereby proclaim May first through the seventh, twenty twenty-two as Small Business Week and call upon our residents to recognize the contribution of small businesses and continue supporting them and honor the occasions and programs and activities that highlight these important businesses dated today, the third day of May, um May twenty twenty-two, signed by the entire city council and attested by our city clerk. And I know that I think two of them are here, and Brandon Neal, I know he is here to say a few words about Caveman Buzz Barbershop, and I think Doug is from Last Minute Flowers as well. Brandon, yeah, now it's your turn, Brandon.
He's muted.
He's muted. And before he today is his birthday, and he's actually at a location trying to go in before his birthday. So his family's waiting on him. But go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, we're on the way. We're here at a Hollywood Bowl. Um but yeah, I just thank God. Uh God is God is faithful. Uh you know, I just I'm a faithful believer in Jesus Christ. I just thank God that we're able to still be afloat. And I just want to thank Brother Hicks and the and the city of Carson, the mayor of Carson. And we're so grateful uh and and thankful, you know, this this brings us back down to earth and it just wakes us up and just, you know, just to let us know, hey, you know, keep keep going and uh to reaffirm us to keep going. And I appreciate that. We love it. Thank you. Our family loves you. You know, the family, uh our uh the Neal family, and uh we're just so grateful and thankful uh for all you for all you in the city of Carson. And uh and then and um you know, just a little bit about the business, the barbershop, the the barber shop is doing very well. And uh we're 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 thriving. We're back. We're back up and running. And uh you know, the mask, you know, is if you want to wear the mask or not, but you know, that's neither here nor there. But I just want to say thank you, and we're just grateful and we're gonna continue to, you know, thrive. You know, you come in looking like a caveman, you leave looking like a gentleman, you know, you in and out. You in and out at 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 a decent time with a clean, fresh cut, you know, I mean, that's our motto, you know, uh you know, from black, white, Puerto Rican to Haitian, you know, we couldn't everybody and everybody. If you got hair, you come to our barber shop, we tell you, we want to, we don't want to be known as uh oh, that's a brother's shop, or that, oh, that's a straight hair shop, that's a Mexican shop. I want to be known as, hey, you look like a caveman coming here, anybody, like I said, from black, white, Puerto Rican, Haitian, you know, everybody. You come in here, you look, you look like a caveman, you're gonna leave looking like a gentleman, and uh that's our motto. And we just want to thank you and uh
Brandon, don't forget to give the address.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, address is uh uh two two eight three three Figueroa Street, Carson, California nine zero seven four five. Uh come visit us. We're open from Monday through Saturday, close Sundays.
Corner of Figueroa.
The corner of Figueroa, yeah. Yeah, corner of Figueroa and two twenty-eighth, right there. And uh next to Seven Eleven, uh and the water store.
Thank you.
Thank you, caveman.
Thank you.
And it's Brandon Neal. My name is Brandon Neal.
Thank you, Brandon Neal. You got something for our uh Mr. Robert Lennox there, too? He looks great, but.
Thank you. Yeah, come see us soon. Come see us. We're available.
All right. Thank you, Brandon. Now, the next gentleman, the next gentleman saved me on more than one occasion with uh the flowers I need. And that's uh Last Minute Flowers, Doug.
Yes, first of all, thank you for giving this proclamation, but I don't want to go any further without uh recognizing uh the brains behind this operation, my wife. Usually you see me here running the store, but she handles all the finances. And she makes sure that we can operate right. I uh I'm proud to see you guys there. I see Kalia there, who has supported us for maybe fifteen years. I see the mayor there, who we worship with for years and years and has supported me since she was at the Parks and Rec. And Cedric, I thank the whole community for supporting this business. And we wouldn't be here without you guys and the type of leadership that you guys provide for us.
Thank you, Doug.
You.
Where's wifey?
Uh she left. She's handling business. It's Mother's Day week.
I tell wifey.
It's Mother's Day week, so she's getting all the paperwork together.
All right. I love it. Well, you do a fantastic job. You've been here forever, and we just appreciate you and uh wanted to honor you.
Yeah, good quality, quality work, quality flowers, Doug. Really good.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Madam Mayor. Can you hear me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes, I can hear you.
Loud and clear? We can hear you. You can hear me. I have something in my hand, if you can see it.
I can't see what?
What is that? It's a cake.
Birthday.
Something's coming up.
Yeah, happy birthday, Madam Mayor. Mayor's birthday is on May eleventh, everybody, and
Oh, you remember MPT.
She's having a big block party. I don't know where, but she's having something.
We'll all be there.
Well, uh, thank you, Councilman, but everybody knows I celebrate all month. And uh my daughter has lined up something for me every day. I started the end of uh March, and I will be letting you know, but I've celebrated every weekend and during the week and for my birthday. It's my birthday. My birthday is May eleventh. I was uh I think that was one of the questions at the Christmas party. Somebody remembered it because I celebrate all year, all month. So thank you, uh Councilman, for remembering my birthday. And then I did have someone delivered me a little cake here, too. Isn't that sweeter then? Can you see it? I'm gonna have dessert in a minute. So thank you very much.
Happy birthday in advance.
Happy birthday in advance.
Happy birthday, Madam Mayor.
And let me guess.
Happy birthday.
And let me guess, uh MOC, you like roses, right?
I like roses. Oh, I love roses.
Love roses.
I love flowers. I'm just a flower fanatic. So everybody knows that. It's my house that we fill with them day by day. Thank you. The next on the agenda, that's all I uh we'll go to all communications uh for matters. Listed on the agenda, Madam City Clerk, do you have any all communications?
Um there is someone waiting in the queue that I'll admit to see if they're here for an agenda item.
Okay.
Um good evening to the caller that was just that minute. Are you here to speak to an item that's on the agenda? Caller ending in one seven six six.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We sure can. Are you here to speak?
Yes, we can hear you.
Uh yes, yes. Hi, I'm sorry to interrupt you guys. I I saw everybody having a good time. Um I just wanted to thank you for uh taking my call.
And she's before you go on, are you here to speak to an agenda item, to a specific agenda item?
Um I was under the in under the impression that um I'm a business owner in Carson, and they told me that um this is where I express my concern about the uh renewal of the business license.
I don't think that this is the time unless you have a specific agenda item. We do have a time later in the program where you can speak to non-agenda items.
Yeah, that's fine. Um I I can wait. Yeah.
Wait a minute. Is this, is this the only one?
Yeah, there is someone. No, there's no one else waiting in the queue.
Okay, let's let him finish so he doesn't have to wait until the end of the meeting.
Okay, no problem. Sir, please state your name and you'll have three minutes to talk.
Okay, thank you so much. Sorry to uh take up your time. I'll be very, very brief. Um my name is Harambe Farrell. Um I'm a uh business owner. I'm also a resident in Carson. I live in Dominguez Village. Um um also, um like I said, a business owner in Carson. I uh um have been paying my business license up uh currently, um even through the pandemic. And I was recently about to pay and renew my business license, but um I was under the impression that the the business license was waived through throughout the pandemic for for two years. And I was saying, I was hoping if I could get my uh business license waived. And that was real, that's the reason for the call. I was trying to pay it. And then um the lady, the clerk, the very nice lady, she told me to see if you can table it at the next council meeting. And that's that's really what I'm trying to do.
Okay, could you call? Uh thank you for calling. Could you get in touch with our city manager? And he will meet with our revenue manager and see, get to uh discuss this with you. Uh, Mr. City Manager, could you uh get his phone number? City Clerk, do you have it? Okay.
Yeah, I got it. I got, I have his number, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so uh to our caller, our city manager will be contacting you. Oh, you can contact him tomorrow.
Okay, great. I also sent an email as I was waiting. So um but I can definitely um send send, you know, reach out to whoever I need to.
Please do. And they will direct you in the right direction, give you all the information you need.
Okay, so do I, do I call them, or do they call me, or should I wait, or what should I do?
If he doesn't call, you call him. Track each other down.
I I'll give you a call tomorrow tomorrow morning, sir.
Okay, and you have all my contacts?
Yes, sir. You're 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 on the line now. I think not just us, but the rest of the viewing uh population has your phone number there as well. So we'll make sure we get in contact with you.
Okay, thank you so much. I really appreciate.
I didn't want you to wait until eleven o'clock. Thank you.
No, I I appreciate you. Thank you. I gotta get home and get dinner started, so that's good.
That means you have to send me a plate. It's my birthday.
No, I'm happy birthday. I saw you guys. Happy birthday. Um I've, you know, I, you got my vote, so that's even better, so.
Oh, forget, that's my birthday. That's my birthday. Thank you.
You're very, I hope you have a great, great day. Okay.
Thank you. Uh
Okay.
Madam Mayor, there is one more person now in the in the queue. Would you like
Uh, does Jim die his item?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll let them in and then I will ask. Okay, good evening to the caller ending in nine seven four three. Are you here to speak to an agenda item?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, please state which item you're here to speak to, and then you have um and your name, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Yes, uh good, good evening. Um I'm here to speak on uh consent item number sixteen. Um my name is Tommy Favae. Um and I'm here to support item sixteen, the Southern California Edison Charge Ready Program Infrastructure. Um and we want to thank the city of Carson and the city staff for taking on uh this endeavor when it comes to um EV charging stations um and making sure uh that um you know, you're cleaning up the air. Um and when it comes to your carbon footprint across the city, uh that uh the city of Carson is doing its due diligence uh to make sure that um city Carson, city of Carson is a cleaner, a cleaner uh environment. Um so I look forward to the RFP uh coming out uh later on and uh during the month of May. And um uh we look forward to um uh the council approving uh this item moving forward. Uh thank you very much.
Thank you, Tommy Favae.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh can you hear me okay? My internet went down at my house.
It did?
So I I jumped on my cell phone and uh you see me okay?
Yeah, very, very good.
Okay, great. So I'll just use my cell phone instead of my uh my computer to continue with the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, that phone looks better than that computer.
The Samsung.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anymore uh people wanting to speak, Madam City Clerk?
No ma'am.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number ten, approval of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two city council successive agency housing authority regular meeting minutes. I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Or second, I'll second the motion.
So moved.
Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Vote the clerk, madam, vote Madam City Clerk.
Madam Mayor, it appears to be unanimous.
Thank you. The next item is consent items number eleven through twenty-eight. Uh, move for approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Uh, does anyone want to pull an item?
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, I won't pull item sixteen, but I'll, I'll comment on it uh so I can stay part of the overall consent. And I want to uh reiterate uh with uh Tommy Favi, a Carson resident himself, uh said, and um to be sure that when the RFP goes out, that the uh electric vehicle uh ITP uh policy that the city of Carson has in place is part of the RFP. I just want to make sure uh to the city manager that you uh and your staff acknowledge that.
So noted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to pull, pull an item? Uh, I will pull item thirteen for a quick and dirty report because I read a doubt amount in here, so we'll move the pool of this consent calendar with exception of item thirteen. Can I get a second please?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Madam City Clerk, report the vote, please.
It appears to be unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item thirteen is a report update on the Dominguez Channel. I need to staff to address the fact that we have submitted a letter of Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, we have our uh our director of public works, um Ms. Eliza Jane Whitman, who's uh on camera there and she can give you all a, a brief uh update regarding that letter. Thank you. Ms. Whitman?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Potem, Councilman. Um, what I wanted to um let everyone know is we are continuing to work with LA County Department of Public Works. There's a core committee that we, we in public works meet with on a regular basis every couple of weeks. And we talked about progress uh and what we recently did is we submitted a letter of intent to the um Army Corps of Engineers and requested that we um be considered for ten million dollars to help us look at gaps and a feasibility study on the Dominguez Channel to uh consider different alternatives uh for improving the health and well-being of not just the channel, but the entire area um through which um Dominguez Channel runs in the city of Carson. So um we requested that. We're hoping because it's a local request that it's going to be much more um liable for us to receive those funds and for us to progress. Uh, in addition, we are um looking at coming back to city council in June to talk about uh community engagement and outreach as it relates to Dominguez Channel and what some of the alternatives might be. So um we also um had an article that was written in the Daily Breeze and that is attached uh in the, as one of the exhibits um to the staff report. And that concludes what I have.
Thank you. I just wanted you to report out uh that we are still pursuing and we have put in a letter for funding and that we are working, moving diligently because at the end, we may, it is my hope that we end up something better than we started out with. And that's a river walk or something that we can be proud of. Because our residents had to undo this over for six weeks. So we need to come out with something. So thank you for that report. And with that, I would like to move staff's recommendation.
Start can.
All in favor, signify by saying.
Madam Mayor, under discussion of the motion?
Yes.
Um, I want to um reiterate what we've said before as a, as a legislative body that we don't want the um, the county, state, or federal government to even think we're not interested uh in revitalizing this natural waterway. Uh, we are very, very interested as been, has been stated publicly. And I'd like uh through the city manager, uh your staff, Eliza Jane and others to uh uh keep on this until we get the results that the Carson residents deserve, which is a healthy, environmentally healthy um uh watershed going right through the middle of our city. Uh, so I just want to say that publicly again, so that no one has any uh doubt of what our intention is uh for the end, uh the end game with uh with this watershed. Uh, thank you very much. I wanted to make that statement. Appreciate it.
For making that statement and that's why this item, you'll see it's on our agenda every meeting until there's a resolution. And therefore, when something comes up, we can discuss it without putting it off till the next meeting. So until we get a, a resolution of what we're looking for, it will be on the agenda. So thank you very much, uh staff, uh for that reporting, that update. The next item is item number twenty-nine. And that's a special, uh, oh, where's my twenty-nine? Is uh special orders of day, is item number twenty-nine. And so therefore uh, we're going to consider adopting resolution number twenty-two, oh, seven, three of the Carson City Council of the City of Carson, California, adopting general plan amendment to GPA one, one, two, two, oh, two, one ordinance number two, 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 oh, eight of the city council of the city of Carson, California, approving a development agreement over two, 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 oh, seven of the city council of the city of Carson, California, admitting the district at South Base Specific Plan SBA twenty-seven, oh, two, one, modifying permit uses, development standards, design features and the operational characteristics of the city council. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, please, for item uh number twenty-nine, uh providing a, a report regarding special orders of the day, we have our director of economic development, Mr. Said Nasee. And so Director Nasee, uh, you'd like to provide a report.
Before we get into that, um, I'd like, I'm sorry, the city clerk, uh, was it properly noticed?
It was, Madam Mayor. There's a proof of timely publication was received by the city clerk. The notice to applicants via email was confirmed by staff. Posting requirements were met for individuals and organizations. The posting affidavits are on file in our office and there was no written communication received.
Thank you. Now staff can give you a report.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. City Master, uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This item was noticed and placed on the agenda for this city council meeting. However, after completion of the required noticing, council member Arlene Rojas appealed the planning commission's decision for certification of the EIR and approval of the uh site plan and design review and the West Infinity Track Map. Okay. Approval of these uh three applications before you tonight, uh rely on the uh final uh supplemental EIR that was certified by the planning commission. However, the certification of EIR has been appealed uh to the city council and the city council is not able to make a decision at this time. Staff would like to ensure that the issues raised by council member Rojas are fully addressed before we bring this item back. Due to the scale of the project, the number of applications involved and the complexity of the issues, staff would like to request the council not to take up this item right now and at the end of the meeting to adjourn the entire meeting to uh May twenty-third at five PM or any other time inconvenient to the city council, so staff can present the entire project to the city council. That completes.
Madam Mayor, um, the, the only caveat is that uh we should open the public hearing and uh continue the public hearing as well, so we don't have to renotice that hearing. So after Mr. Nasee's presentation, uh you should open the public hearing. Uh, maybe first talk about whether the council is willing to continue it to May twenty-third and if council members are available. And if the council is willing to do that, uh then open the public hearing and continue the public hearing also to that date and time. And then at the end of the meeting, we have to adjourn the entirety of the meeting um to that date and time. And hopefully the only item will be left that the council doesn't really consider is this meeting, this item. So then it all works out and then we just cover this meeting, this item on the twenty-third.
So at this point, I should be opening the public hearing?
Uh, eh, well, first I would, I would see if your colleagues are okay with the council's, with the staff's recommendation to have this meeting on the twenty-third, to give it its due diligence and give it the attention needed to address Councilwoman Rojas's issues.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion that we uh uh continue the item to the twenty-third as staff recommended.
Second.
Well, okay, so now you have to pub, open the public hearing and then continue the motion, continue the hearing.
Okay, thank you. The uh, now we're going to open the public hearing for public testimony. Or is there any, Madam City Clerk?
No ma'am, there's not. There's, there's no one waiting in the queue.
Okay, so therefore, uh, we've already moved in second, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. And I'm gonna go continue it to the twenty-third as motion by our, our councilman and second by a councilman.
At what time? We need to be specific about the time, what time?
Um, I'll take, uh, the motion is five o'clock PM.
Okay, five o'clock PM. We will continue this council meeting, adjourn this council meeting to mo- um, May twenty-third at five o'clock.
Okay, so just so the right mayor, the public hearing was opened and it's being continued to uh May twenty-third at five PM. And the council uh is aware that at the end of this council meeting, uh the entirety of the meeting is going to be adjourned to May twenty-third at five PM, at which time this item will be considered because it's not being considered tonight.
Thank you. So there's a motion, a second discussion?
Under discussion, a question to our city attorney. Um, so the fact that we're having a city council meeting on Tuesday, May seventeenth is not um going to interfere with uh our legislative process on this appeal?
No, um, the, 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 you can continue any regular scheduled meeting to another date certain and, and it will be uh as long as you clarify that you're adjourning that specific meeting to a state certain, that becomes um, the adjourned general, uh, regular meeting of this.
That's fine. I, I understand. Just want to be sure.
Yes, Madam.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, just want to uh make clear, it'll be uh continued to Monday, May twenty-third.
Yes.
Yes, so just let the community know it's a Monday, not a Tuesday on a regular council meeting.
Yeah.
Right? And also, uh, city manager or um mayor, is, is there a chance we could even make this an in-person event? Or do we have anything from the county that, so not in person, it's still going to be on Zoom?
It's gonna be Zoom and I will go on public. Uh, when we've announced it'll be June first will be our first public meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so this will be a Zoom meeting, uh and I will re-announce it at the end of this meeting, but we're gonna adjourn this meeting tonight to the twenty-third.
Uh, I have another question. Why is the staff recommending the twenty-third on Monday instead of Tuesday, the twenty-fourth?
I know the planning commission meets on Tuesdays, but Tuesday is a meeting our residents are familiar with and.
Right.
Well, wha- is there a reason?
On a Monday?
To, let's ask the staff that question.
I think we were just uh trying to come up with a date. No, the twenty-fourth, isn't that the planning commission meeting?
They, they meet on a Tuesday and I.
That's correct. Yeah, I just.
I think we just didn't want to deprive the, when we were going over calendars to make a recommendation to the council, we didn't want to deprive uh residents of an opportunity to attend this or attend the planning commission meeting. We just thought, let's do it on a standalone day at five PM after work where uh it doesn't interfere with any other meetings and the members of the community can participate.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Said. Thank you, uh, uh.
So it's been moved and properly second, um, whoa, 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 so the public hearing has been closed. Uh, there's no deliberation and so we will adjourn this meeting to Monday, the twenty-third at five o'clock, the entire agenda.
Do you want to?
Well, you have to do it at the end of the meeting. Right now, all you're doing is uh continuing the public hearing to that day.
I beg your pardon?
Right now, all you're doing is continuing the public hearing. At the end of the meeting, we have to remember to adjourn the meeting to that day certain, but I'll remind you.
Okay, we'll continue the public meeting. Okay.
And Madam, thank you. Uh, just acknowledge that we have Darren Embry. So thank you, sir, for uh joining us this evening. We will see you. Yes, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you, Darren.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Item number thirty. Uh, continue public hearing to consider.
A motion?
I beg your pardon? We continue it.
Okay.
The public hearing. Do we need to vote on that, Sonny? Sonny?
Yes, it's better to vote on it. So I thought you did though. I thought you all voted to continue.
We didn't vote. I was, I was asking for a vote.
Okay, sorry.
It was moved and properly second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Madam City Clerk, report the vote.
Madam Mayor, it appears to be unanimous.
Thank you. Item number thirty. Continue public hearing to consider the proposed allocation of community development block grant CDVG funds for the fiscal year twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three and adoption of the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three annual action plan. Mr. City Manager.
Hey, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, again, uh, our director of economic development, uh, Mr. Said.
Will you open the public hearing on that one too?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, let's see if this was properly posted, uh, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, uh, because it was continued, it, it had been properly uh posted. We had the proof of timely publication received by our office. The notice of applicants via email was confirmed by staff. The posting requirements were met by individuals and the organizations, as well as the posting affidavits that are on file in our office, and there were no written communications that were received.
Okay, staff presentation.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Mayor, uh, members of the city council. This item was continued from the April nineteenth uh hearing and is therefore on the agenda tonight. Staff is requesting a further continuance of this item till additional time for HUD to provide the city with notice of its uh program year two thousand twenty-two CDVG entitlement allocation. Staff is requesting that the public hearing to be continued, uh, uh, continued to a date to be determined after HUD has notified the city of its program year two thousand twenty-two allocation. That hearing date will be renoticed at the time of the hearing. Uh, at the city council will be provided the opportunity to hear the public testimony, including presentations from uh applicants for funding. Uh, the city council will also have the opportunity to discuss the CDVG expenditures for the next fiscal year uh program year. Uh, staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing, close the public hearing and continue the public hearing with the new noticing to be issued uh for the future public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, uh, councilmembers, you have any questions?
Well, I, I would just, uh, after you open and close the public hearing, I'll make a motion to uh continue the item until uh uh the staff uh notifies us as to the, the first available date of our, of our city council uh to uh deliberate on this.
So I'm gonna open the public hearing at this time. And I'm going to close the public hearing. Was there any public comment, Madam City Clerk?
No ma'am.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and uh councilman dear, uh, you to make your motion.
Okay, I will repeat the motion that we continue the item until staff informs us um at the first possible date uh uh after HUD has made their determination to uh have it on our agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Madam City Clerk, report the vote.
Unanimous, Madam Mayor.
Item number thirty-one is another, another public hearing. Consideration of ordinance number twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty, amending the permitted use, designations and non-conformity use provisions of the Carson zoning ordinance regarding industrial use involving CalR substances and regulated and non-regulated materials. Uh, Madam City Clerk, was this properly posted and reported?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the proof of timely.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the proof of timely publication was received by our office and the posting requirements were met by individuals and organizations. Uh we have the affidavits on file in our office and there were no written communications that was received.
Thank you. Staff, uh presentation please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and again, I believe our Director of Economic Development, uh Mister Said Nissa is going to provide a pre-presentation in regards to uh this particular item.
Thank you, uh Mister City Manager, uh Madam Mayor and members of city council. Uh I'm sharing my screen, uh I hope everybody can see.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh this text amendment uh request was initiated by uh the attorney inland star. And they, they requested uh three major items on, on their, on their letter, uh that to clarify what materials may be stored by right uh in cities' industrial zones and allow the storage of non-hazardous materials in industrial zones by right and require CUP if CalArP materials uh are present uh at any site in industrial zones. Uh just to give you a little bit of history uh on uh, on this subject. Uh it's been to planning commission uh three times uh and city council provided this uh direction to the, to the uh planning commission on May eighteenth of two thousand uh twenty-one. And uh basically the recommendation uh before you tonight or the ordinance before you tonight is uh, is uh, is a little bit different than uh the recommendation by the city council uh and in, including limiting the applicability of the CUP requirement to applicable regulatory threshold quantities of regulated materials. The proposal ordinance uh has, has a couple of really important items that I'll go through. Uh in, in regards to new uses uh in industrial zones, any use that has uh CalArP regulated substances above threshold, uh those uses are prohibited. And if the materials that are stored, they're regulated under the state hazardous materials regulations, uh then those uses uh would require CUP. Uh in, in, in relation to existing uses, uh which is very important, those are, those are all the existing businesses that uh have uh these type of uh materials stored at, at their site or they're using uh these materials. Uh they, they can continue uh to uh, to uh conduct their business uh as long as uh you know, they follow the established process in this ordinance and obtain a permit that will, I will get into uh in my next slide. Uh these, these businesses, I, as I stated, uh they, they can continue their operations and they're exempt from non-conforming regulations of the city's uh municipal code. Uh also, uh we've expanded the, the permitted uses uh for some non-regulated materials already permitted to be manufactured in industrial zones. So just their storage is permitted now. Uh the, the director approved permit uh applies to all existing businesses that uh store regulated materials. Uh this application process will be very simple uh and uh will be uh mailed to uh all, all businesses uh in industrial zones. And they'll be required to fill the, the application and provide uh information. Uh this information includes the types and quantities of CalArP or regulated materials uh used or stored in the, in the business. And also they're required to report any outstanding violations if they have any uh of the state uh unified program regulation and status of the uh efforts to correct the, the violations. Uh they also, uh this is another important part of this application is that all existing businesses would agree to allow the city inspectors to inspect at least once per year and pay an application fee to cover the costs of the administration. Uh thi- this uh application uh will be approved by the director and as long as the businesses uh fill out the, all the required information that I just mentioned, the director generally approves uh all these applications. Uh the, the uh permanent approval process freezes the amortization period for termination of non-conforming uses. In other words, uh if, if businesses fill out this application in a timely manner, uh their business can go on uh as uh, as uh it's been going on for years. Uh there's nothing else that they need to do as long as they receive this permit. Now, the inspections uh will be conducted by city staff or uh, or a consultant. Obviously, uh either the city staff or the consultant must be qualified to conduct these uh inspections. Uh and uh the inspector will ensure that uh the Carson Municipal Code uh provisions are adhered to and all the permit conditions are adhered to. Uh and report any uh suspected uh unified program violations to Kupa for further investigation and enforcement. Uh because uh the city staff or the consultant will not have enforcement uh obligations uh or rights uh under the uh, because those inspections are done by Kupa. Failure to update the information or sub- uh or submit to inspections will cause a permit, permit to, to lapse. False or fraudulent applications will be denied and any permit issued are automatically deemed void, uh null and void. If a permit lapses, the permit can apply for reinstatement, restatement two times and after three strikes, uh the permit uh is uh permanently forfeited. Staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance as recommended uh by staff and rec-staff to prepare a resolution for council's future uh consideration to impose heightened uh fines for violations uh proposing the ordinance. Uh and other alternatives are uh before you as well. Concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Uh to my colleagues, are there any questions?
Yes, um Madam Mayor, I have questions. Um I, I wanna know, isn't this the same thing um as inland star? Uh are these hazardous materials that we're allowing them to uh, to house? Uh one thousand per violation accrues daily. Uh was this approv- approved, approved by the planning commission?
Uh the, the violations were not approved by uh
No, I'm saying was this whole uh, cuz you wanna introduce an ordinance, has this went to the planning commission yet?
Uh yes, it has gone to the planning commission and planning commission has made a recommendation to uh the city council. And a- as I stated earlier, uh there, there are a couple of uh tweaks to uh planning commission's recommendation. And uh that's, that's the ordinance that's before you tonight.
What happens if Cal, uh CalArP or whatever you call it, stored under a threshold, wh- what if it's dangerous? What if it's hazardous? Even though the, it's stored under the threshold, how do we determine what can't, you know, blow up in our community?
Well, if, if uh, that's a very good question. If you're referring to the, the existing businesses, uh right now, uh we have uh very little information uh what type of materials uh these businesses store and, and what quantities. So this, this inspection process would allow us to at least know and have an inspector, city inspector, uh go at least once a year to these businesses to determine uh whether uh you know, they're uh, what they're storing on site, if they're uh telling us uh on their application to verify that uh the quantities and, and the materials are the same. And the most thing uh I think it is to, for us to find out uh what violations there are, if there are any businesses and how they're, they're addressing them. Uh that's, that's a safety issue that I think it's gonna help uh with this uh, with this ordinance that we will have more on our existing businesses.
Right now, we have none.
So, Madam Mayor, if I just may, uh Mayor Protem, uh thi- this is a, a result of inland star. So what happened with inland star is when we found out, when code enforcement found out that there was um a violation and that uh, that, that inland star was uh operating without the proper permits. Um you know, the city got involved and uh we tried, we tried to fix that, but then we realized that we have an issue that uh because the county is the jurisdiction uh that uh has control over these CalArP material and the city had no control, we had to create a process where the city can now go and has the right to inspect these warehouses to make sure that uh they're not storing things they're not supposed to. And, and then we realized our code did not prohibit storing of Cal, CalArP material. Um so now we're making it very clear that storage of any CalArP material is prohibited. There are certain uh material, like uh material that go into baking Windex or uh cleaning material, things like that that would be allowed because state allow, allows those. But even with those, because we wanna sure, make sure that certain quantities are not passed, we've created two, two processes here. One, to have an inspector that goes out and inspects once a year. And two, we're making them self-report as well um to the county and the county can then check uh this. So this is setting up the city uh to have authority to inspect these and, and to start enforcing uh fees for violations. Um so in inland star, we had to do that through the settlement agreement because we didn't have a municipal code. We just wanna make sure you pass a code that you can apply it now to all businesses uh and have these inspection rights.
And then violation.
And penalties, exactly.
Yeah, and if then, and we do the same thing with inland star, now that we can go in.
We did, we have done that with Ca- the, the inland star does not have any more CalArP material. Inland star, we did in the settlement agreement put that we have inspection rights, so we did all of that, but now this will apply to them too.
Thank you.
Gives us some strength.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
I'm just trying to understand this here. So we have, I'm just looking at the examples of the, the chemicals. They're all flammable and hazardous to our lungs, but what we're really saying is that we're gonna do an inspection more often, even though we already know that the chemicals are dangerous.
So, so the chemicals um are dangerous at certain levels. Uh what we learn in this process by hiring experts and by having uh uh county and jurisdictions reviewing all of this is some of these chemicals are not um dangerous at very low levels and they're used to make, like I just said, Windex. Um so if you prohibit all of them, even at low quantities, you're essentially shutting down a lot of the warehousing businesses you have in the city. Um so they can't, they can't store Windex, for example. They can't store bleach, like so the, the numbers and the threshold, uh and Ben is online and he can respond to this, have been a- assessed by uh regulatory agencies. These are not numbers staff have made up or that we've just come up with them. These are regulatory agency thresholds given to us uh at to, a- as to what levels they're under the threshold of being considered dangerous or hazardous. They're um small quantities for, like I said, household material. I don't know, um hand sanitizer, I mean, it's, it's um a lot of material have, a lot of uh things have these materials in them.
Thank you.
And I, what brought, brought it to mind is when they said some of the materials at McDonald's hamburger stand, you know, they're up under the threshold.
Yeah, don't eat McDonald's people.
In the, in the hamburgers.
Not in the hamburgers, but you know.
But, oh no, but that, that's a good point the mayor's making, yes. They wouldn't be able to store some of their materials, McDonald's, like their cleaning stuff. If you prohibited everything. That's why we said we got the regulatory agency threshold levels to make sure it's all under the thresholds that would take them from garden variety household materials to something more.
Any more questions from staff?
Yes, I have a couple more questions for staff, um if you're ready. Clarification from uh, from staff, um Said, I believe could answer this. If someone were to build a new warehouse in Carson, uh how does, how would this ordinance, if it were to put into effect, um affect their business?
So other than uh the, the, the permitted uses uh section that I uh mentioned, uh if they have CalArP materials that are uh over the threshold, they're, they're not permitted at all. Uh otherwise, uh we require CUP. So that's the first thing. Uh the second thing is that uh they, they would also uh submit to uh these annual inspections as well. That applies to the new businesses as well.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh in addition, I have another question. If for some circumstance, uh inland star or another company that's actually can handling barrels of very, very toxic substances like um like maybe um something that might cause a chlorine gas release, uh which is deadly to humans. If some fluke accident were to occur at one of these sites, um for instance, um uh maybe they meet the regulations on strapping and binding the uh, the drums to the um to the platforms that are holding it, but they're in the process of uh maybe moving it from a truck uh to the storage rack and unfortunately, right at the moment that the forklift is lifting up this, this item and setting it on the shelf, be strapped down uh properly, that's when a earthquake or tremor occurs and that barrel will fall, you know, thirty feet down onto the ground and break open. Um that's a worst case scenario, it's very unlikely to happen, but it's a possibility that it could happen. How are we protecting the Carson residents uh from a uh disastrous accident uh like I just described? How would this ordinance help them?
That, that's, that's a very good point. I'll, I'll start uh to point out a few things and then uh so Ben Jones, uh who, who uh headed this uh, this ordinance uh basically can fill in. Uh this, this is a highly regulated uh business uh by uh, by the state and, and also the fire department. So they have uh very strict regulations and these businesses that handle these uh materials uh have uh trained staff uh that handle these uh, these uh, these materials. Uh it, it is correct that, you know, at, at any given uh, you know, point uh of tr- transport, uh the DOT is involved if, you know, it, it's in transport. Uh and uh, you know, the businesses uh have licenses that, you know, to handle uh these uh, these materials. Uh and uh they also have plans in case uh something happens. Uh so their plans, their uh business plans or uh that, 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 that they're required to have and they're approved by Kupa, uh they do go through these type of scenarios that uh you're mentioning, councilmember, uh to uh, wh- what, what are they required to do, what happens? And uh, you know, if, if it's this material, you know, you do this. If it's the other material, they, they do uh something else. So that's all I, I have to add. I don't know if Ben has anything else to add.
Well, let me ask a little question to that. Um uh Said, um this uh, the regulations, I mean, I'm not in the industry of handling hazardous uh materials, so I need a little education here. Are there regulations that the most hazardous materials, for instance, during transport be secured the way you would like uh? If you're moving a refrigerator, instead of using a regular dolly, you use a refrigerator dolly which has a strap around it. So it's not gonna fall in transport. Or for instance, uh another idea would be these materials can only be stored at ground level. Uh they can't be stored uh at elevated um stacking or elevated uh locations. Uh so there would not be a chance for it to fall um a distance that would cause a drum to break. Uh are those in the, uh in the regulations already? Or is there something we can do to um, maybe we, something we can do to require that if it's not in the regulations? So that's a two-part question.
I can answer that if you want, Said.
Go ahead, Ben.
So, Councilman Dear.
So Councilman Dear, uh, there are federal Department of Transportation regulations that apply to the handling of hazardous materials on interstate freeways, on roads, anything related to to transporting them in the public right of way. When you see those big trucks, those big tankers that are driving down the freeway and you see those signs on them and you see, you know, uh, all of the little specifications and the way that, you know, the way that they have to be enclosed and contained to make sure that there's no accidental.
It's it's a diamond shaped signs on the on the.
Yeah, when you see those signs with those placards and those markers, that's all federal D O T regulations.
Right, I actually uh I did a hazmat training and I I learned quite a bit about that. So I understand what you're talking about.
Yeah, and that's that's designed to make sure that if the if the vehicle gets in an accident, that those materials aren't going to come out. And then you have the state supplementing those hazardous materials regulations uh with respect particularly to storage, uh, in in actual warehouse facilities and requiring uh businesses to have um emergency plans, uh response management plans to to uh game plan for what they would do in the event of all of these different uh disasters and emergencies and potential scenarios. So the state supplements federal regulation in that regard. And the city really doesn't have authority to actually regulate the operational aspect of hazardous materials handling. What we do have is the authority, the land use authority over, you know, zoning per permitting permitted uses in our respective zones. And what we're trying to do here is really flex the city's land use authority to add to and supplement, you know, the the safety precautions that those uh federal and state regulations provide by not only prohibiting new uses that involve the most hazardous substances, which are the cal art, but also imposing a minimum C U P requirement where one would otherwise not exist and uh requiring disclosures, inspections and reporting for existing businesses in order to avoid becoming non-conforming uses.
I say, Ben, uh, so of course, uh, on public right of way, there are regulations that are, I'm sure, followed. And I I'm I'm sure that the operators of these warehouses and these businesses, um, they understand the law. They understand the safety procedures. They want to be safe. They want their employees to be safe. They want the residents to be safe. Um, I'm just uh interested in us sending a message that we want it to be the safest possible. Uh, that and maybe um go a little above and above and beyond. Uh, as I described in this very unlikely worst case scenario, it's on private property, it's being transported with um possibly a forklift and something happens, you know, like the perfect storm makes place. So um you're saying that the city cannot add the state regulations, but we can add to true land use.
Yeah, through already, through our land use authority, we are attempting to supplement that because what we found is that the the Unified Program Agency for the city, which is known as the Cooper, which is L A County Fire Health Hazardous Materials Division. They don't uh they don't inspect these businesses particularly frequently, these cal art businesses. So um their their normal inspections are once every three years. We've asked them, can can you conduct more frequent inspections of the businesses in Carson? Or can the city of Carson pay you more to inspect more frequently? And they've said no. And uh, you know, you you said you can't do it, do it, you can't hire a consultant to do it. And we, the Cooper, will not conduct more frequent inspections, even if you pay us. We can't just because it's just from a regulatory perspective for them, it needs to be even. So that's where we have implemented this supplemental city inspection requirement where not only is the inspector inspecting for compliance with the director permit and the municipal code, but also that inspector is going to be qualified in hazardous materials regulations knowledgeable in that field such that they can identify if there's any potential suspected violation of those state or federal regulations. That uh inspector can uh can then report that to the Cooper for follow-up because any member of the public, any person is allowed to uh report suspected violations of cal art regulations or, you know, those types of regulations to the Cooper. So this would uh look up uh provide an additional layer, uh supplemental layer of regulatory oversight to where we are going in those facilities more often. We know what's gonna, we're gonna have better knowledge of what's in those facilities because of the reporting requirements. And we're going to be able to follow up not only with municipal code violations and permit violations, but also with reporting to the Cooper because then they would conduct a specific follow-up inspection on that reported violation, rather than waiting for their next regular inspection.
So so Ben, you're you're suggesting, and and I just want this clarification for for everyone in Carson to understand that what your office, city attorney's office, combined with our our staff, is recommending, um, is going to give the very maximum protection a city can can create for residents to protect against these hazardous risks. Is that a a true statement? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. And we're also asking as part of the staff recommendation for council direction to bring back a resolution to impose heightened fines so that when these, if and when these land use regulations are violated, we actually have specific, you know, special especially high fines that could accrue on a daily basis. You know, for instance, one thousand per violation. And and each day that a violation exists is considered a separate violation. So it would accrue at one thousand per day. If a business, for instance, comes into the city after this ordinance is adopted and starts operating with cal art regulated materials without coming to the city and we we don't find out about it, then we find out about it a year later. Uh, so three hundred and sixty-five days have gone by. That's three hundred and sixty-five one thousand dollar violations. So they'd be subject to a three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar fine in addition to closure of their business.
And they're notified of that is immediately if if this ordinance takes effect.
They'll be on notice of it by the fact that the ordinance is on the books, yes.
So there'll be no doubt that they'll know what the rules are and the rules they have to follow.
No doubt, because in our permitted use tables in our uh in for our industrial zones, it'll state that cal art uh uses are prohibited.
Okay, well, that in the case, I will make a motion uh to.
Madam.
Just to say that we may want to open the public hearing.
Yeah, before open the public hearing.
Oh, you haven't opened it yet.
No, we haven't opened it. We haven't.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, go ahead and open it.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, so I'm I'm listening uh to all this. And again, I am not an expert in in environmental and chemicals and hazardous materials. And I listened to Councilman Jim Dear talk about worst case scenario. And all the answers came through and it sounds great. Uh, but you know, we we had a fire last year in twenty twenty-one on Avalon near the Dominguez Mobile Home Park. And uh, that warehouse stored hand sanitizers. And um, correct me if I'm wrong, that that is a calo chemical that was there. And the effects were grand. So I don't know if anyone could, uh, you know, Madam City Attorney or Assistant City Attorney can make a comment on that. Um, uh, recent incident. And I I guess I'm I'm reminding uh the the ninety-seven thousand uh residents in the city of Carson. You know, so that they understand uh what we're talking about here and then taking in consideration um the uh the public safety plan that we are listening to right now. So again, I'm talking about the fire last year in twenty twenty-one.
I I'm happy to respond to that, Councilwoman Ross. That's a that's an excellent point. If we had this ordinance in effect, we would have been able to do random inspections and we could have avoided that situation. And because we didn't have this ordinance, this warehouse got to do whatever they wanted to do, store whatever they wanted to store. They didn't have to self-report anything and, you know, it it happened. So this this actually helps that situation as well.
And and thank you. I had an idea what the answer was, but again, I'm reiterating it and I'm saying it out loud so that the residents uh do hear and understand what we are discussing here right now. And again, thank you. Thank you for uh for answering that for our residents.
Madam Mayor, and when you open the public hearing, maybe there's someone from the industry on the meeting tonight that might want to comment. I don't know if there is or not.
When we open the public hearing, they'll have a chance to speak.
Yeah.
Uh, any more questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, question, I I it might have been stated and I didn't get it. This ordinance, if passed, will only go forward from the time of its uh being approved forward. So what happens to or does it cover those that are in the in the rears of this that are already in existence in the city?
Yes.
Permit that we discussed uh that all existing businesses uh would be notified after the adoption of the ordinance. And they would have to uh fill out the application, tell us what they have, how much they have, and if they're they have any violations. Uh, as long as they do that, uh, the director uh is is obligated to approve it uh under the ordinance. Uh, so it basically gives a pass uh with this information that the city has uh for existing businesses to conduct their business as, uh, you know, they have for, uh, you know, uh, in the past. Uh, in addition, the most important part of it is the inspection that we talked about that uh will have the right to inspect at least once a year.
And we don't have that right right now.
Yeah, so we don't have that in place. So this would give us what we need to have as a city to know what we have in these warehouses because I think that's been the biggest concern that I've had. And I know different residents have come to me asking, do you guys know what is coming in our city? For the most part, we don't know whatever they put on, I guess, on the original application. But after that, we don't know what comes in after that.
Good point.
Councilman Hicks, if I could chime in here. I think first of all, it will give a great deal of additional information about what's in your city. But I also wanted to point out there is a distinction between lawfully established existing businesses and just other existing businesses. The prohibition in the ordinance against cal art uses would apply not only to new uses, but to existing uses that are not lawfully established. So only only uses that came in legally to the city as a permitted use got the necessary land use permit when they came in, if any, would be eligible for the director permit. Uses that came in illegally and new uses would be prohibited if they were if they involve cal art.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Uh, so now I'm going to open the public here, yes, I heard of something. I'm going to open a public hearing, uh, Madam, clarify if there are any public testimony.
Madam Mayor, there is one person that's waiting. I'm not sure if they're here for this, so I'd have to let them in too.
Let them in, sit us on this item.
Okay, we'll do. Good evening to the person that's just been admitted, the caller ending in five, six, eight, one. Are you here to participate in the public hearing on this item? Caller ending in five, six, eight, one. Hello?
I'm doing the oral communication on agenda.
Which item?
Item, yeah, which item was it?
We're in public.
Oral communication, non-agenda item.
Non-agenda items, okay. No, right now we're in the middle of a public hearing. Do you mind waiting a bit longer for that? Okay?
Yeah, no, 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 yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. Are there any closing comments from staff? Close the public hearing, uh, council deliberation.
Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion uh so we can go forward with this. I know we're enjoying our council meeting, but as you know, as a mayor, you need to move it forward and you're doing a good job at it. So I'll help you. Um, I will move that we approve staff recommendation um uh on this uh new ordinance and uh introduce this first reading. Uh, ordinance number twenty-one dash two-one-two-zero, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Carson, California. Uh, one amending section nine, one, four, one, point, one. Uses permitted of division one, uses permitted of part four, industrial zones of chapter one zoning of article nine, planning and zoning of the Carson Municipal Code regarding permitted uses in the industrial, manufacturing-heavy and manufacturing-light zones and for regulated and non-regulated substances. And adding section nine, one, eight, two, point, four, six. Nonconformity for use or storage of regulated substances to division two, nonconformites, conformites. So that's, is that a new word, Said? Okay, of part eight, implementing provisions of chapter one, zoning of article nine, planning and zoning of the Carson Municipal Code regarding nonconformities for use of regulated substances as an exhibit number one. And direct staff to prepare a resolution to be presented for council consideration at a subsequent meeting to establish heightened administrative fines pursuant to Carson Municipal Code twelve, zero, three, point, three, D for violations of the land use regulations established via ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty-one twenty. That's my motion.
Second. Um, and I would like to say that this item has taken us to this state. We worked on this, uh, Councilman Dear, we started this over a year ago.
That's right.
And we're finally at the point because it was always, we do not know what's in our these factories. And this is the first time we have some teeth. Yes, it did go to the planning meeting. Yes, I did sit down with staff and the city attorney several times to come up with something that we could live with. So I'm glad a year later we're at this point. Now we can start telling our residents that we are on top of this. And it may not be the best, it may have to be tweaked, but we have done something here tonight. And so it has been moved in property seconds, properly second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Under discussion.
Yes.
Okay, I want to um really uh agree with what you're saying on that. Um, as we know, inland star was uh something that motivated us. And then, of course, this terrible disaster, there's a fire on Guardian Boulevard and Avalon Boulevard that led to the uh substances, toxic substances being washed into the Dominguez Channel. Uh, that is another catalyst. And uh, I I feel that, you know, we're doing the right thing. I'm glad we started on it when we did, uh, so we're not starting from scratch. But uh, that type of uh uh incident like the city attorney mentioned, at least we will have a better chance of avoiding it from ever happening again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I vote aye, if you're ready.
Oh, we all voted, ready voted. Okay, uh, report the vote, Madam City Clerk.
Madam Mayor, it appears to be unanimous.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, before we move on to the next item, I really wanted to thank Ben Jones for this item. Uh, I mean, this was very complicated. He is now a hazmat expert. He had to learn the science of it. He read, followed up with the A G's office, regulatory agency, um, various, uh, I mean, he really educated himself. And I just, I cannot thank him enough for the thoroughness he showed in this. Uh, it is the best ordinance. Um, so thank you, Ben, for all the time you put into this.
Uh, Ben, yeah, Ben, I was remiss because you and I spent many hours together on this. And uh, Sunny, I want to thank you also because when I was talking, you would say, no, that's not what you mean, that's not what you mean. And and so, you know, Ben, you were there, you did what we had to do. And I just want to say thank you, thank you from a grateful city. And and so some of the questions now, we can say, yes, we do have an ordinance in place. So thank you, Ben, Ben, and thank you, uh, Madam City Attorney also.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you, members of the council.
The next item is, is that item number thirty-two we're on? Uh, update on recommendation for the city's fifty-fifth planning anniversary ad hoc committee. Staff.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, before you and um, Madam Mayor and council, we have the a brief update and looking for some recommendations from council regarding the fifty-fifth anniversary. Um, and these are some recommendations from the ad hoc committee. And so uh, one of the uh items that we'd like to present is a brief uh slide here of some of the uh potential logos that um we believe we can uh get your approval and recommendation from the recommendation of that hot committee. Kind of get your appetite on what you all would like to see moving forward for this fifty-fifth. And so at this time, if we could have our our driver, I believe, uh, Mr. Kennedy, he's popping up a few of these before you. So it's the pleasure of you, Madam Mayor and the council, as to what you all would like to see. This is the first submittal uh from a recommendation of the uh ad hoc committee, so.
And the ad hoc committees consist of Councilman Hiltzman and Councilman Rojas, Councilwoman.
Actually, it's it's Councilman Rojas and uh Councilmember Hicks.
Oh, it's Hicks, okay.
Yes, ma'am. So uh, these are just, again, some some recommendations here and that that was put together. And so this is the first one, and so we'll move on to the second one there. I guess you all can chime in as you see something that strikes your fancy.
I like that one.
I like the first one.
We got a one-one vote here, okay?
Yeah, the the second one, I.
Yeah, the the second one I got arson.
I like number one. Let's go back. Oh, no, I like that one better.
There's only two to choose from?
They narrowed them down?
Oh, there's three?
No, here we go. Yes.
Our past illuminates our unlimited future. City Cars, oh, number five.
This one here is, this is more not necessarily a logo, but maybe more something that could be utilized on the stationery such as flyers and things of that nature that could be at the bottom of a logo, but wanted to kind of just present that um, as an option if you wanted to add, but this is, I think, number four, if I'm not mistaken there. Uh, go back if you would, one more, Kevin.
That was number two.
That was actually, that's number two. So that for other one was three.
Number one.
So you have one, two, three, and then the, uh, stamp approval. So that's, that's what we have for, uh, to present. So if you can kind of keep rolling through those, Kevin.
Yes, recommended by the ad hoc committee?
Yes, ma'am.
Which which one do they like? I like one.
Well, the three that you see are the ones that were presented?
I agree with the mayor. I like number one, too, where that's, you know, whatever the council wants, uh, will be.
I'll go with number one since, uh, that sounds like, uh, let's be a unified body and take number one.
Together we're stronger, Councilman.
Better together, better together.
Okay, so if you can, Kevin, back to number one there, yeah, if you hold it there. So this is the, uh, this is number one. Um, not sure if this, if this is, again, a consensus, but if this is what we're hearing as a
Have three votes.
Approved logo, then we can, we can move.
What's the slogan?
Is there like a model?
There's no slogan here on this one.
You can have a slogan.
There was, there are some recommendations, um, and and it really, uh, our, our our creative mind there that's on the council and the ad hoc committee, our council members, uh, Councilmember Hicks had, uh, has the, has the only submissions at this time for, uh, those slogans and let me, uh.
So are are we all agreeing that number one will be the, uh, the logo?
That's great.
Okay.
Well, since fifty-five and still alive didn't make it, this, yes, this looks great.
Yeah.
So I think the 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 main, the main consideration for a theme that we've had that seemed like the ad hoc committee liked was celebrating fifty-five years of Carson's future. So that's, that was the main slogan, Madam Mayor. Why are you not a mayor?
It's, it's, it seems long.
You know, we, we.
Kind of long.
Our slogan in the fifty was fifty years of growth and splendor.
Did I, did I hear someone say fifty-five and still alive? That sounds like, uh, like a disco song. And just think about it.
Stayed alive.
Stayed alive.
When the Carson Incorporated, uh, is the beginning of the disco era. So maybe that was some connection.
Fifty-five, what, what did you say was fifty-five and was?
Still alive, that was, uh.
And still alive.
Councilman Hicks is original.
No, I was, the one you had, David, is the one that I submitted to. What would you say it again?
Yes, celebrating fifty-five years of Carson's future.
Uh.
Now, I'm probably not saying it with the, uh, it's probably.
Can it be shorter?
Everybody has an opinion.
Well, growth and prosperity, fifty-five years of growth and prosperity.
Fifty-five years of growth and prosperity.
You know what, I, I, Madam Mayor, my opinion is we should let the ad hoc committee
Come back with.
Come up with, uh, with a recommendation unless, unless you and I, yeah, and, uh, Councilwoman don't, really don't like it.
Well, okay, can we have three good ones?
Yeah, we, we can provide s- s- some more themes. Uh, we will just, what we, what we like to do is we're going to put this out to, we're going to put this out to, I think, Madam Mayor, our recommendation was we're doing the survey monkey, so we wanted to get this slogan or the logo out. We'll get the slogan from uh, recommendations of our volunteers. We know we're going to pull two volunteers from every commission. And then we're also going to be asking for volunteers through the community, through our survey monkey. And so uh, we'll also allow and provide an opportunity for, uh, themes to be provided and considered. So we'll have some considerations from the ad hoc committee on themes and then we'll go forward with any, if there's any other suggestions, that we can bring you back something, um, that's more palatable, I think, for, for you all. Uh, since you're not, um, agreeing to the celebrating fifty-five years of Carson's future. So we'll go back and see if we can, uh, we'll go back to the future and come back with something more spicy.
Back to the future?
Back to the future.
Did you say that?
Said it.
Well, well, to the ad hoc committee, we need to start putting this, uh, logo and slogan on all of our special events coming up. So you're going to have to go to the drawing board before, uh, the next council meeting. Because then we'll be into, we didn't put it on for your event, does this weekend or the Cinco de Mayo? That's the, uh, plan, so. Two weeks, can we, ad hoc committee, can we put our heads together and our committee members?
Sure.
That's a nice way of putting it.
Expedientiously and put it going.
Well, have it on for the next council meeting, the seventeenth is what I'm basically saying, please.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
We have the logo, right?
We have the logo.
Got your logo.
We just need our message.
On every event.
And you can't, you can't hit them all at the bark on the same time.
Yeah.
We'll strive, we'll strive for fifty-five. So, okay, got it.
There you go.
And then also, uh, we need to put together a budget, uh, from the ad hoc subcommittee, you know. I saw what we had for last year, but things have tripled and doubled, depending on what you're going to do.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's my question. So that'll be presented at, during the next budget workshop, during special events, so we can put that up under that.
That's exactly right. Yes, Councilmember, that's exactly what we were going to do that based upon a recommendation from the
Maybe.
Ad hoc committee will, will present something for the budget on the seventeenth, so that'll all get included in that, in that item.
Madam Mayor, I have one more question. Uh, of course, we're praying the pandemic will be behind us uh, by the time we want to do this celebration because an in-person celebration of this type is most appropriate. And, um, so is that, is that the plan of the ad hoc committee and the city staff? That we're going to do something in February of twenty-twenty-three or what exactly is the plan?
There's a series of events that's being, uh, on the table, one being to do something in the actual month of the anniversary, which is in February. And to do at least three other events within the year to celebrate the entire year of twenty-twenty-three.
In-person events?
Most of them are, all of it are in person.
Okay, good. Hopefully that will be safe to do that.
Outside, in person, and one inside.
Yes, correct. And if, if, if I may, I just, and I, I apologize, there was one more submittal. Um, because this, this might, something, this might be a, a catchphrase here for your, for your fifty-fifth anniversary. This was celebrating our heritage and embracing our future.
Now, that sounds more like a theme.
That also was submitted by Councilman Hicks, I apologize.
He didn't remember that?
I don't have it in front of me.
Say it again.
Yes, ma'am, celebrating our heritage and embracing our future.
Now, that's a good one.
Yes, that's.
Thought went into that one. Thought fifty-five and still alive.
From that did not come from me.
Who said that in the beginning, in the very beginning? Someone said fifty-five and still alive and it's, it's catchy.
It's pride of.
It's pride.
Say it again, I like it. Don't you like it, Councilwoman?
Yes, I do.
Celebrating our heritage and embracing our future.
I love it.
Oh, there you go.
What about you, MPT?
Works for me if, yeah, that works, uh, you know, I, you know, I'm a catch, I'm a phrase guy, so you know, I gotta kind of digest it. I'm trying to digest it.
Digest it.
But fifty-five and still kicking, ain't it? Fifty-five and still kicking, ain't it?
We need to hear MPT. Say it.
Say it, MPT.
Gonna sound different.
What is, say, uh, celebrating the past, embracing the future? Is that what he said?
Close.
No.
So celebrating our heritage and embracing our future.
There you go.
Oh, celebrating our heritage and embracing our future. Okay.
Let's go.
Kind of rolls, doesn't it?
It's there with enthusiasm.
Let's go, we need to hear it from the MPT.
But I would say, I would say celebrating, uh, celebrating our history.
Heritage.
Uh, uh, her- heritage, uh, uh, and creating, I don't know, new history, I don't know. Let's think about it another day. It must be late.
Celebrating our heritage and, and, and.
Embracing our future.
I like that. What about you, Jim?
Well, you know, again, um.
You want two more?
I think that, I think the ad hoc committee ought to come back to us with. It sounds fine to me. I, I don't have an objection to it.
But you know what?
It sounds great when, when David Roberts says it, so he's going to have to be the spokesperson and he can only say it, but.
Maybe David can teach the MPT how to say it.
But you know, in all fairness, you haven't, you haven't met with your committee and then float that in front of them and they may come up with something else.
Well, they, just, just in all fairness, Madam Mayor, uh, to Councilmember Hicks' defense, he actually did submit it to, uh, not both in pu- and on Zoom and then also through email. So everyone has seen it. And, uh, there has been no objections to that particular, uh, uh, recommendation. Um, I think we were just trying to see what the council's, uh, pleasure was with it.
Yeah, it sounds fine to me, Madam Mayor.
It sounds fine to me, too. I like it. It's kind of fuzzy.
So we, we, you're right, we do want to get it on our, on our events and start, you know, advertising it, so.
Somebody with a very nice voice can say that and.
Say it, Councilwoman, say it, Councilwoman.
No, I was gonna suggest that, uh, Sparkle say it, because she's got a great voice.
Oh, then everybody will buy into it.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
I don't know, I think, uh, Mayor Portem Hilton has a good voice, just a matter of, uh, you know, practice.
Say it, Hicks, Councilman Hicks. Councilman Hicks.
No, Hilton, I meant.
I know, but I want to hear it from Hicks.
Yeah, I want to hear it from Hicks.
Oh, yes. There we go.
Heritage and embracing our future.
We missed the first part. Go again.
Celebrating our heritage and embracing our future.
Oh, there you go. Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Celebrating our heritage and embracing our future. Wow.
I like it. It's fuzzy. I told you it was fuzzy, it's catchy.
It's fuzzy, it grows. So, um, does, is, is that, is that a consensus, Madam Mayor, or are we still looking to provide?
If that's what the ad hoc committee is recommending, I can live with that. Going once, ad hoc committee, going twice, ad hoc committee?
I love it.
I agree. Uh, the ad hoc committee came up with it. It's great.
Okay.
There we go.
There we go.
Great. Lo- lo- logo and theme has now been, uh, established and we will ensure that that gets out on all the upcoming events, flyers, and we'll begin to start promoting that, uh, immediately.
Boom.
Thank you.
You accomplished that.
So the, uh, so we've provided direction. You'll be coming back with another report at the next council meeting.
Asking for money.
Thank you. So all in, uh, we didn't take a consensus vote, all in favor of the logo and the theme, signify by saying aye.
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 Madam City Clerk. Where is she?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I couldn't unmute. There's, just for clarification, there was no motion in second. This was just a consensus.
It was a motion in second.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't.
I motioned it. I motioned it.
Actually, City Clerk is right, and it wasn't a motion, but we can make one real quick.
Make it real quick, Councilman.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Dear.
Welcome.
And all in favor signify by saying aye. We all said aye.
Aye.
Who seconded? I'm so sorry, who seconded? No one seconded?
Me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, unanimous.
The next item is, uh, consider approving resolution number twenty-two O eight for rejecting the protests of payment of interim development impact fees by Brandywine Homes for the Carson Landing Development Project staff.
That, me, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I believe we're going to pull this item. Uh, there has actually been resolution to this, and so therefore, uh, this will not need, uh, any council action, uh, for this.
Madam Mayor, just, the resolution is that they are not protesting their fee and they're going to pay their fee.
They're going to pay their fee.
That, that's what I was saying, so yes.
So the item has been pulled and they're going to pay their fees?
Yes.
Well, Madam Mayor, I think the city manager means it's, it's simply being removed from the agenda. Yeah.
Yes.
Great. Okay.
Okay. Item number thirty, uh, four, consider local appointments to city commissions, commissions and boards and our city council subcommittees and our city affiliated organizations by the mayor and city council.
Madam Mayor, I, I made all my appointments to commissions, committees and boards.
You did? I thought you had one open.
I don't think I have any open. Uh, if I do, I don't think I do. Let me, let me look.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, environmental commission. I'm going to march through Georgia, each one. And then when we get to you, uh, you can fill in. So the first one is, uh, Eken Environmental Commission. I.
Those are yours, Madam Mayor. You have two alternates.
Okay, alternate one, number one will be, uh, Christina Tressman.
Got some part-time?
Hmm. What? Part-time what?
No, we're good. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh. Uh, my alternate number one will be, uh, Christina Vets, Tressman. She's filling the one that came bacon on some time ago. You said I could fill it on the third, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, um, alternate three is not available. The closing date is May eleventh.
Okay. That's my motion for the Econ- Environmental Commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve your appointment.
And I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, Human Relations Commission, I need to remove Federico Elias. He has not been in any meeting. And I hear that he does not live in this city any longer. So I want to remove him from the Human Relations Commission.
Okay, I, I, uh, make a motion to approve the mayor's removal. Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I have a vacancy. There's no vacancies on Parks and Rec. I have one on alternate on planning I'll fill later. Uh, it's not, I can't fill it now anyway. Public Liberties is filled, Public Safety is filled. Uh, Public Works, uh, the MPT.
Uh, I'll come back.
Senior Citizens is filled, Veterans is filled. Mobile Home Rental, uh, Women's Issues is filled, Youth is filled. Measure C is filled and Mobile Home Rental Review Board, Councilwoman.
I'll still, I'll come back on that one.
Okay. Uh, Relocation Appeals, uh, MPT.
I'd have had somebody. I'll come back on that one. I thought we talked about that last week.
But I didn't get a name.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the city clerk didn't, she didn't show it. And General Plan Advisory, uh, Councilwoman.
Um, I'll come back on that one as well.
Okay, and then you had a question while I was unfinished, so you had a question. What was it?
You, you answered it on Federico Elias. I was just concerned. I didn't know whose it was, um, so.
We remove him. Okay.
Thank you.
So that concludes that, uh, all of our agenda items. Now we will go to Memorial Adjournments. Do we have a, yeah, Memorial Adjournments. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did receive three names and I will read them aloud now. Kitty Williams, Irene Olmira, Frank Stamps.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam City Clerk, did you say Fern Stamps?
Frank.
Frank, oh, Frank Stamps.
Frank Stamps.
Okay, thank you.
And Irene is our former, uh, city treasurer, mother who passed away, Karen Avia's mother.
Wow. Just recently.
Wow, did hear that, okay. Any others? Uh, to our bishop?
Uh, yes, let's pray for, um, those who are bereaved tonight. And, uh, we also want to keep, uh, the Hicks family in our prayers as, uh, Papa Hicks is, uh, going through. Uh, so Father, thank you tonight. We give you praise and glory and honor. We pray that you would bless those whose names were called, their families, and, uh, And Father, we pray that you bless our colleague, that you bless his father. Give him the strength to handle this season that they're in and we pray for your healing and miraculous power. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 Madam City Clerk, all communications for matters not listed on the agenda. I think we have one caller.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there's one person that is waiting in the queue and then there were two that were submitted in writing.
Okay.
Good evening to the caller ending in five, six, eight, one. We appreciate your patience. Feel free to unmute yourself and state your name and the purpose of your attendance here.
Me?
Yes, that is you. Please state your name and what you'd like to share and you have three minutes.
Kimberly Cortado, Parks and Rec Commissioner. Just want to give an update on events for this month. On May fourteenth, we have Faith, Family and Friends at Stevenson Park. And that will be from ten AM to six PM. And then on May twenty-sixth, at Veteran Sports Complex, we have Memorial Day Tribute. That is on Thursday from six PM to eight PM. Also wanted to say what a great event Cinco de Mayo was on Sunday at Carson Park and how staff always goes above and beyond putting events together for our residents in the city of Carson. Everybody had a great time, from what I could see. I'm thinking between eight hundred to a thousand people were in and out of Carson Park that day. On May seventh, we do have some parks doing opening day. I know Carson Park is doing theirs on May seventh. And Callis Park is doing theirs on May fourteenth. And Dominguez Park is doing theirs May twentieth. Also, for the fifty-fifth anniversary for the city of Carson, very excited and would like to be a part of the planning if that is possible. And that is the end of my oral communication. Thanks and have a great evening.
Thank you, Cam.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I wanted to publicly thank Kim. She was volunteering and assisting the city staff with Tony Zanega and other staff members that were onsite at Carson Park. She was there early in the morning when I arrived and to do the five K walk run. And then I I saw her on stage. I left for a while. When I came back, she was back at the gate volunteering. And when I left toward the end, she was volunteering. So you know, Kim, you're a great volunteer. I just want to publicly thank you for putting forth that type of an effort. You're a great commissioner and a great public servant in helping everyone. I just want to recognize you for your great work. Thank you.
And Kim, I want to yeah, we want to ditto that because you're at every special event we have. You beat us there. You're there before the council arrives. You're there when the council leaves. So not she doesn't pick and choose. She's at every city-sponsored event when she's able to be there. And that's a true commissioner. She's at the banquet. So you are Parks and Recreation Commissioner from the old school.
Thank you very much. And I love what I do and I love my city.
Thank you, Cam. Okay, who's next, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no one else in the queue, but we did receive two in writing.
Okay.
Okay. One is
Are they all signed?
They are, yes. That's the first thing I look for now. Learned my lesson. One is from Rick and Modesto Palito. Says, good evening, Carson city residents and city council. On behalf of all Carson residents, I'd like to share the following oral communications for the record. Please recognize NAMI South Bay is Mental Health Month, twenty twenty-two. Pay and budget overtime for our Carson share for Fourth of July Weekend Safe Streets. Comprehensive written MOU Street Slurry Sidewalk Repairs Project in District Two and Four, starting with two hundred and twentieth Gulf Avenue, Main Street, two twenty-third Truck Route, pay their fair share now. One fifty-seven acre flawed project postponed and reconsider SEIR supplemental EIR, including environmental commission oversight, solar panels on all warehouse in the city. Lastly, excellent community Cinco de Mayo event at Carson Park. Saludos to all city staff. Gracias si se puede. Caesar Chavez Monument Committee meeting coming soon. Peace and blessings. Good night. God bless Carson. And that was from Rick and Modesto Palito and family. The next one is from Jan Lawson. Attention to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes and council members. I would like to know why all employees who worked during the COVID nineteen pandemic did not receive the hero pay. I worked during the pandemic when we were called back in May or June of twenty twenty, up until December second, twenty twenty-one. I worked for the city for almost fifteen years and I was at work when the supervisor was not taking care of members of our taking care of our members and overseeing the operations of the facility. This is very concerning to me that I, as a dedicated employee, did not get the hero pay, but the new staff hired in twenty twenty-one did. I can't believe that the city would do this to those who gave their time when others did not, and especially since I was given one hundred percent of my time. I just retired from the city and seeing how things were done, I'm very disappointed in all actions of this matter. Thank you, Jan Lawson.
Thank you.
That concludes non-agenda submissions.
Yeah, last I know, our city manager will address that. Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question to city manager? Do we have? Do we have a number on how many employees fall under that category of employees that worked during the pandemic, but then maybe left or retired for any reason during that time? Do we have a number or is that?
I don't. Council, yes, I can. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
It's not on the agenda, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll bring it back.
Well, sure. And we'll get that number. We're asking for that number.
They'll give it to you personally.
Yes, thank you.
Any more oral communications, Madam City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Okay, council members request to add items to future agendas.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to request that the that a premium pay or a resolution be brought forward on the next city council meeting. I've already mentioned this before and I've asked for this already. Employees that have been working for the city of Carson sometime, they retired after December first of twenty twenty-one. And they missed the premium pay. Many, they worked through the pandemic, took risks. And so my request is that we have an item on our agenda as a new resolution that city attorney could craft for us. That we we honor premium pay for employees that have retired from the city of Carson after December first of twenty twenty-one. And and before the premium pay was allocated. So that's one. Yeah, December first of twenty twenty-one till till the premium pay, which I think was July, April seventh, I think the day was. So that's one. And that's the ARPA funds. The second one is the very anti-democratic dictator amendment. I'm requesting that again to be on the agenda, to be removed from our ordinance that governs our agenda. Number three, I'm asking again for the Mobile Home Park zoning ordinance to be on the next agenda so we can establish that ordinance as a mobile home park zone in the city of Carson. That's my third request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I really would just like an update from staff on the building and safety division within the city of Carson. So you know, whenever that can be, when we can get that update.
Are we having a consultant? What are we doing?
Yeah, where are we on that?
Consultant.
Okay.
Yeah, I think
So we're waiting. We're waiting for that.
Yeah, send it up on RFP.
If it pleases, Madam Mayor and the council, we could provide an update on the first meeting of June.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
I do have some items to add. This Friday, May sixth, we have the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department Cultural Event and Town Hall celebrating Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. That's Friday, May sixth. Six PM to six thirty. And then there is a town hall meeting at six thirty to eight PM at Carson Community Center. So that's this Friday. And then Mayfest, that is May seventh.
That says weekend.
Yes, May seventh at the Carson Community Center Parking Lot. That is a ticketed event, private event, but it is food, car show and music. And the for those eighties soul, R and B soul and and dance. There's JR's performing and Jaya, the queen of soul. And that is May seventh, eleven AM. Carson Community Center Parking Lot. And the phone number is eight one eight four four seven nine three seven four. It's being presented by TalentUSA.com. That's this Saturday. So.
Those two events. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could I ask the councilwoman to give that phone number again, please?
Yes. Eight one eight four four seven nine three seven four. This is a ticketed event.
And you said it started at eleven. What time is it?
Eleven.
What time is it over?
I don't have that here.
Okay, it's not urgent. I'll find out during the week. I'll call the
Get your dancing shoes. You have time to get your dancing shoes on.
Okay, I've got a pair.
Anyone else?
I would like to mention our faith and oh, sorry, Councilwoman.
Oh, I'm sorry. Reminding Councilman Hicks, don't we have a mental awareness month? That's on the seventh as well. It's virtual. You're muted.
I think that's Hicks.
I'm waiting till it comes around to me. I have
There you go. Okay.
Ready to go.
I'll leave it to you. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, Councilman Hilton, I mean, MPT Hilton.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I wanted to take this opportunity to invite everyone to Stevenson Park on Saturday. And Kim has already said it, May fourteenth for the Faith Family Festival. And we are excited. We have a number of people who are coming to share. We got William Murphy, Michael Fisher, Prentice Lewis, Uncle Chuck, Nick Miller, the Zion Messengers and many, many more. I want to encourage you to come out. Outside is finally back open. Stevenson Park has never really had a festival and I'm excited that it's happening in the mighty D one. You're invited to be my guest. They do have VIP seating. Call the parking, call the park and they will be more than happy to help you. It's gonna be vendors. We'll have a kids' zone. I'm excited about what's going and what's happening on this particular day. So I'm grateful. Follow us on social media, get the flyer and tune in and tap in early. Outside is back open. And I know if outside was back open last week at Cinco de Mayo, someone said about eight hundred to a thousand. I thought it was two thousand. People out there at three o'clock when I got out there, I'm telling you, it's gonna be it's gonna be a great event. I'm looking forward to it. So please come, share, grab your family, grab your everybody and tell them it's happening. Peace. See y'all.
Madam Mayor, I have a request for the councilman, for the MPT. On those lists of headliners, could you put Bishop Jawan Hilton on there? Because I want to make sure there's over a thousand people showing up.
Nah, nah, I don't want I don't want to mix
He's singing.
Just Mayor Pro Tim, you know.
MBG. I couldn't even see our picture, MBG.
I didn't make those flyers at all. That's I didn't make those flyers.
Okay.
I'll plan to be there.
Thank you.
Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, as was stated earlier, month of May is Mental Health Month. So we're doing our Mental Health Resource Forum, which is gonna be virtual this year. Saturday, May the seventh, working on family dynamics, conflict resolutions, addiction, substance abuse, grief and loss, suicide, suicide, self-harm. The theme this year is coping with COVID through connections, care and community. Information to get in contact, call three ten eight three five oh two one two, extension one four six zero to get more information because this will be a virtual event so that everyone in all the areas can get information about our mental health awareness and mental health services and help.
Is sleepy?
Who?
You.
That's his cool look.
That is cool.
Chill.
Oh, chill.
Twenty-four hour chill look.
Today's Tuesday?
Yes.
Not remember what day it is. But last week, well, the last couple of weeks, a lot of events and activity that I attended, one was the Drug Take Back Day, which was very well received. The Boys and Girls Club of Carson had a STEM Science Project Workshop and Showcase. And the students that came in there had very nice projects. And I'm very pleased to know that our future is bright to having these individuals that could come from our Carson schools who are out there doing these science projects. And the last event was the College Signing Day at Castle University Dominguez Hills, along with our mayor, our mayor that was there in attendance. And we met the new LAUSD School Superintendent. And one of the key things, there's an upcoming event and I'll let the mayor know, let the rest of my colleagues know about it as well. It's an event to meet him virtually and have any issues that we may have about LAUSD. One that I'm pushing forward is to get our school police back at our schools. The second one is to address our community and schools program and making sure our programs that we have in our schools stay in our schools and not be cut at any given time. So just want to let you guys know that I'm out there working hard to try to make sure our residents and our students are safe and still receive the service that they deserve.
Thank you. I think our city manager is gonna be attending that meet and greet also, aren't you, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay. And I know Councilman Hicks, you, God willing, you'll be there. Councilman Dear, did you have some? Oh, you already added. So what I want to do is congratulate our staff for being, making the city a role model in this water conservation project. I think that says a lot about the city and our staff that we're working with. Eliza Jane, thank you for all that you do and making sure that we're on top of what we need to be on top of. Tended the Cinco de Mayo and Councilman Hicks, just the Cinco de Mayo was great. I mean, it was people excited about being out. We've already said that. Kudos to the Benita Street fourth grade class. We're gonna be so excited when we hear what they wrote on. It's just awesome. And I want to thank Tiffany Rochelle, the teacher, for running lead on that. The college signing day was great. Well, very well attended. So I want to thank the our LAUSD supervisor, what is she? Director?
Who?
You know.
Dr. Hamphill.
Dr. Hamphill.
Yeah, she was
Romano for being there. And and I just want to announce the other special event that we're having for the month of May. It's called my birthday.
That's what it is.
We're gonna ask Luther.
Happy birthday.
We're gonna have Luther sing your song.
And cards and calls, so.
All the ones saying that.
Happy birthday to me.
You know how to sing it all.
Okay. And so with that being said, I move to adjourn this regular council meeting to May twenty-third at five o'clock to finish any unfinished business, including item number twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Okay.
Good night.
Happy birthday, Mayor.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you, guys.